The New Jersey Open Public Meetings law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, public notice of the meeting has been given by the Board Secretary in the following manner: posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Building, mailing written notice to the Courier-Post and the South Jersey Times, and filing written notice with the clerk of the Township of Washington on April 2, 2025. Roll call.
Mr. LaLiberty? Mr. Serrano?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Ms. Clancy?
Here.
Ms. Chilla?
Here.
Ms. Hartong?
Here.
Ms. Kuzempel? Okay.
Yep.
Motion, motion, I'm going for motion. Okay, motion to go into executive session to discuss...
So somebody gives you a motion. We need a motion.
Motion.
Oh, motion.
Second.
Okay, Lyndon, round.
Can you say what you think is discussed though?
No, I can read that after.
Oh.
Read that after, right?
Oh, okay.
You concluded the motion as to whether or not to discuss in executive session just to be sure.
Okay, all right, so motion to go into executive session to discuss, I thought I did that after, sorry. The following: attorney-client privilege, personnel matters, disciplinary updates, professionals, negotiations update, legal matters. Do I have to read the whole, the whole thing? Okay. All right, let me restart that. All right, let me restart. Okay, okay.
You'll be here all night if you don't read it.
Resolve that pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Public, Open Public Meetings Act. The public shall be excluded from that portion of the meeting involving the discussion of, I'll go through the list again, attorney-client privilege, personnel, disciplinary updates, professionals, negotiations update, legal matters. Further resolve that discussion of such subject matter in executive session can be disclosed to the public if any action is taken by the Board either at the resumption of the public session, at the conclusion of executive session, or at a public session at some later date. Now, motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, I mean, do you need to face this thing or no? Yeah. All, and then...[179.12]
This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone wishing not to be seen on television may be excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have any presentations tonight or regular work session discussion of the agenda, so we'll just move right into Mr. Distillio with a report from Community Outreach.
Thanks, Ms. Kazempel. I have a lot of great things to share today. First, on March 26th, many of the WTEA staff members got information about the mini-grants for their classrooms. Want to make sure everybody knows that May 5th is the deadline to get that to your principal, and then from there, May 12th is the application to get it to Heather Sullivan, who's the WTEF Vice President. So just making sure everybody knows. Also, an unfortunate thing, on April 24th is Take Your Child to Work Day, we will be on spring break. Therefore, we will not have Take Your Child to Work Day this year. As far as going back to the WTEF to help raise money for the mini-grants, we're asking as many people to participate in the 28th Annual Golf Classic. That's going to be on August 9th, 2025. For questions, please contact Heather Sullivan again. Special shout out to, I just got this correspondence today, special shout out to Mr. Stephan and the Drama Department. There's the Montclair Theater Night Awards 2025, which seems to be the high school version of the Oscars. We want to let everybody know that we just found out that our fall production of Harry Potter and the Cursed Child, high school edition, was nominated for a total of nine Montclair Theater Night Foxy Awards. So the nine categories they were nominated for was Outstanding Achievement in Lighting Design, Scenic Design, Special Effects, Dance, Choreography, Best Actor, Presley Church, Best Ensemble in a Fantasy or Fable, Outstanding Production in a Fantasy or Fable, and Outstanding Direction of a Play, Mr. Stephan. So congratulations, and we're looking forward to seeing how that plays out. Want to make a, say special thank you to everybody who had a piece of organizing the junior prom, and I know the senior prom is coming out. I heard that was a wonderful event, and also over the weekend, the springtime soiree for project graduation. Apparently, we raised a lot of money. I don't know the exact number that we raised, nor does Mr. Anderson, but I just want to say thank you, especially to three main people that helped organize it, Mrs. Ator, Ms. O'Brien, and Ms. Maraz. Thank you very much. Couple more things, three more things. Shout out to Mr. Schatzman and his football leaders as they were in Episode 10 of the We Are Township Leadership Podcast. We publish a new episode about every two weeks where we talk about ethical leadership and leading by example, and this effort has been in place throughout the year with the assistance of Mr. Lindstad. It has been a wonderful experience. We found it rewarding to not only talk to leaders in our buildings, but also the students that they serve. And through these 10 episodes, we celebrate the educators who are leaders by example and children who they see leadership in. And this week, in a couple days, we're going to launch Episode 11. That's going to feature Chestnut Ridge Councilor Guy Crowley and his students. You can view them on our YouTube channel, WTTV, as well as, or you can listen to it on Spotify. Mr. Anderson and I led the final superintendent student cabinet this week, and not only do these young adults have fabulous ideas, they are committed to service and assisting others along the way. Just want to thank all of the students who served on the committee this year for their candor and their wonderful ideas. Mr. Anderson and I are looking forward to continuing and hearing these wonderful students' assertions and suggestions about Washington Township. And finally, a special shout out to all the schools in the district for their support of autism over the last week. Recognizing the importance of neurodivergent learners is essential, and WTPS has committed to this understanding. Teachers, staff, students, and administration at the school levels deserve great accolades as they collectively work to promote respect for all. That's my report. Thank you, Ms. Kazempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Distillio. Items of old business. Anyone have an item for old business? Okay, can I get a motion?
I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to bring Dr. Hibbs back as superintendent.
I second that motion. To bring Eric back.
Any discussion?
Good question. Do I have to abstain from that?
I believe you, you, Pat, and Carol.
Do we abstain, or just?
No, you're gonna abstain.
Right, is that right? Pat, Linda, and Carol?
You and Carol.
Oh, okay.
Pat, Linda, Julie, and Carol are conflicted, if that's what you're asking me.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing non-roll call.
Mr. Serrano?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mrs. Baker?
No.
Mrs. Bloom?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hartong?
Abstain.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Kazempel?
Abstain. Motion fails. Any other items of old business?
I just want to comment today, at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, they had an Alex's Lemonade Stand that the kids worked at during their lunch recess, and they raised a lot of money. And I won't remember Casey's mally name, I'm sorry, Casey, but the teacher, okay, I know her by her, she was a student. Anyway, it was an excellent thing to do, and they raised a lot of money. The other thing I want to shout out to the dance production on Thursday night, Elements, the dancers, the choreographer, it was just, it was fantastic. So, a shout out.
Thank you, Mrs. Clancy. Okay, can I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? I don't have any cards, so I guess motion to, okay.
Who is, is that Mrs. Schechter?
You can just go ahead.
You don't have to sit down and get back up.
Okay. Good evening. I guess I have a question about the vote that just happened. Why are some members required to abstain? Once the doctrine of necessity was enacted, is that for not all actions, or was it just a particular action? So, I also reached out to the board to ask who our superintendent is at the current moment. When I called administration, they said it would be discussed tonight. I didn't see it on the agenda. Again, I think we should bring Dr. Hibbs back. So far, there's been no information provided to me or to anyone in official capacity as to why he's incapable of serving as superintendent. Last week, Ms. Kazempel, you shared that your ethics violation or, you know, accusation resulted in a reprimand or public record. When I requested that from the state, it was denied as still pending and inaction. So, are those documents available, and can they be posted to the board website if they are of public record? And then, at the end of the meeting last week, you voted, several board members voted to suspend the policy that would allow the Board of Education Solicitor to act, to be too conflicted to act on the negotiations committee. Is this going to be a permanent change? Why the change to the policy of so? Thank you.
First, about the doctrine and the conflicts.
So, with regard to the individual conflicts, that's in the doctrine, which is posted on the website. Those conflicts are specifically set forth in there. I'm not going to get into any more detail on that. With regard to your question on Dr. Hibbs, obviously, the board is not allowed to give you information related to any employee, whether it be the superintendent or otherwise. That's probably why you're not getting the information you're seeking.
What were the other questions?
I think that covers it. Yeah. Oh, well, regarding the doctrine, originally Elaine and I were both conflicted, but then that issue was resolved, the issue that, you know, conflicted us. So we're not conflicted anymore on Dr. Hibbs related to that for that reason. So Elaine isn't, but then Dr. Hibbs had filed ethics against me, and I responded, and now we're waiting for that. So that's why I'm conflicted on him. And Carol is conflicted on anything related to him because of her ethics charge. And then the other two people, Linda and Pat, are related to employees. The item you mentioned about the reprimand, I don't know where she went, but, oh, there you are. That, I'm happy to share that, but as the complainants, one of the complainants mentioned at the microphone that it still has to go through the SEC again for approval. So that's why we're waiting for that. But, and I think that's everything. Okay. Tom Baldassaro?
She also asked me to superintend.
Oh, Annette Miller, Annette Miller.
Thank you. You talked about just now that you and Elaine are no longer conflicted. Actually, you were no longer conflicted last week when you invoked the doctrine, and it was wrong. You had five unconflicted members last week. So I hope you've had discussion around the risk that this district's under for inappropriately invoking a doctrine the second time as well, because that, it was, you know, again, five unconflicted members last week, and you invoked the doctrine. You need to reverse everything you did last week, would be my thought. I sent a couple emails today about the budget. I know you're going to vote on an increase today, and I just would love to hear some discussion around the why. Washington Township is one of the most heavily taxed districts related to schools in the state of New Jersey. There's only 11% of municipalities that have a higher tax rate from schools than Washington Township. I think putting forth a plan without a real plan, I mean, I hope you have a plan that keeps us sustainable. We don't go through this again. I talked about this last year when we raised the taxes. Said it was malpractice to raise taxes above the cap without assuring that we wouldn't have this problem again, and here we are. It's just, you know, I look forward to hearing what a full plan. I don't know how you can ask for a tax increase without presenting a full budget first. You're putting kind of the cart before the horse there, and it's unfair to the public to do that. I presented a couple other things to you today, the most egregious to me, you know, the publicly reported data. When we look at our food service, there's an area in there that says how much we support per pupil food service. The average in the state is $6 per pupil. Washington Township is 112. What are we doing to get that down? That's worth almost a million dollars. You want to find big money? 520 out of 660 or so districts have zero, and we're at 112. That's the sort of thing you need to look at when you're looking for big things in a budget. You need to look for, you know, comparing the benchmarks. This is what, you know, I had talked about before, the importance. And one last thing just to share, you know, there's a lot of talk about our administration and how we're bloated and overpaid. We are 12% under the state average in what we spend on administration. If we wanted to match what the average school district did, we would add 1.7 million in costs to this district. So instead of coming down on administration that we have too many, we should be saying, wow, how are you getting it all done with so few people compared to what we have in the rest of the state? So, you know, I'm all for cutting where we need to cut, but what you have to do is look at where are we high? And we're not high in administration, guys. It's, that's what the numbers tell you. So as you're looking to do what you need to do, and the public talks about, you know, all of the administration we have, it's just not fact. It's just not. And, you know, when people make comments, it would be great if they had facts attached to it.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider asked me to clarify that Ms. Miller is acting as superintendent until we find another fill-in as part of her role as Assistant Superintendent. Ginny Murphy?
That's right.
Good evening. I'm going to hold my comment on the ethics because I didn't come here to speak about that tonight. I think there's more important things to speak about tonight, but I disagree with what Ms. Cozempel just said. So, budget question, this is going to be to Janine. Don't blame the taxpayers, it's their money. My first question is, what impact did the change in the school funding formula in 2019 have on the current situation this district finds itself in? In 2018, the board learned that because hold harmless aid was frozen by Chris Christie for five years, our district was receiving funds for students that we didn't have in the district while others were growing and we're not getting funding for those students. So, I guess in 2019, when Steve Sweeney went around and was behind the change in the funding formula, they came to Washington Township and they said, Washington Township, we had a target on our back. Those of you, I think there's 12 board members out here that remember that, they said you're overfunded. You have, you have to cut $8 million in seven years, okay? 2024 was year seven. Many of us know that without addressing those cuts gradually over those seven years, this day was coming. This day came last year and this day is back this year. If you looked at the budget presentation from 2010, which I was on the board in 2011, if you looked at the budget presentation in 2019, and if you looked at the budget presentation in 2024 and 2025, you would see the same group of people, all of us look a little older, the same organizations saying the same arguments and the same exact thing. Two superintendents in two weeks. Here's what I know about Jack McGee. He would have never stepped up to do this job if he didn't think he was healthy enough to do it. Jack McGee never quits. Let me tell you something, Jack McGee never quits. And I'm doing that on purpose. If you ever talk to him, Jack McGee, Jack McGee never quits. Jack McGee resigning after eight days confirms everything I suspected. Jack McGee would not let this board tell him what to do, period. There are several board members that believe they need to run the district along with being board members. Board members do not administer the district, point blank. You know that, you took the training. Having a board member draft an organizational chart eliminating positions and listing names and salaries? Where were all these employees rice? These people that are sitting in the audience, were these people rice when they were talked about? Ari, maybe you want to instruct your board on 18A 27-4.1. Dr. Hibbs, invoking the doctrine of necessity in the cover of darkness, in a meeting between meetings, and then never informing the public that such an action was done until a vote to suspend Dr. Hibbs was taken and a member of the public inquired. This is the board that claims to be transparent and wants to bring the government to the people. Let me tell you what the doctrine of necessity is not. It is not a tool to allow the base of the board to conflict another board colleague on a manufactured ethics complaint that they anticipated would be filed so that they could fire the superintendent. Any adult that could sign that complaint which contains zero evidence and use a child as a pawn has some real searching to do. Lastly, does an ethics complaint over a grade change over two years ago really warrant the removal of the superintendent via police escort along with the removal of his personal property on the same day? This wasn't an administrative emergency. It was a manufactured opportunity to carry out a side agenda of some board members. And why is the second employee involved not on administrative leave? Dr. Hibbs would not allow the board members to administer the schools. That was his job. So let's fact check a couple things. I'm running out of time. Board members can't talk to employees. Once again, Julie takes a thread of truth and weaves it into her false reality. Board members cannot talk to district employees about board issues and how to resolve them, period. All complaints must be sent to the chief school administrator. Rep Council, this is the meeting between the CSA and its staff. The board has no role in personnel. I never received rep council minutes my entire tenure as a board member. Line item budget, for tentative budget approval, never past practice. Always a slide presentation, an overview to get the pulse of the board. Am I done? I'll come back. Thank you.
Ron Lucarini?
It was nice to hear about the Drama Department and the Oscars, New Jersey's version of Oscars. I think that was the guy that they didn't want to hire, right? The guy who's the head of that? Anyway, Ms. Cozempel, we could answer this afterwards. How come every time you're on the Board of Education, there are all these ethical questions swirling? It's you. That's all there is to it. And you had the audacity to send me a cease and desist letter from some quack lawyer that we sent back a while back and said, you know, go pound sand more or less, all right? There's always controversy, but getting back to the, what Tom Baldassaro was up here talking about in terms of the $112 costs for, you know, cafeteria workers or support staff. I always have arguments with Tom, but, about that, because I'm a union guy. And he, I'm not qualified to argue with him about finances, all right? The man was the, a CEO or a CFO of a billion dollar expansion, all right? I ran a hoagie sale, so I don't think I'm qualified. But, on the surface, I always tell Tom, this is my only argument, that I'm a union guy and I want everybody to have health insurance. I want everybody to have, you know, a full-time position if they want it. I'm a pie in the sky guy. And then, of course, he hits me with the practical end of it. But, here's where I always lose the argument, not just with Tom Baldassaro, but with every person who leans a little bit more conservatively. They come back to me and they say, well, do you want to pay $112 for what you're seeing in, on this Board of Education and the, and the results that we're seeing in the classroom and across the district? And that's where I have the problem, where I can't come back at them, okay? Because we're spending this kind of money and then our union leaders are involved in shenanigans with this conflict of interests so that we could get Kyle Chilla to be conflicted so everybody could be conflicted, so then everybody could vote, okay? That was unethical. It's, you know, part of why we are on the bottom 30% of the scores in, you know, whatever, the rankings, all right? I wouldn't mind if we're paying everybody $112 per kid or whatever it is that figure he yelled out, if we were also in the top 30% in our scores and in what we're doing in the classroom. And this stuff is affecting the classroom. I've talked about this numerous times and all I get from Serrano and Bloom and you, Cozempel and Ralph, well Ralph doesn't really say anything, and of course Baker, she's another story in and of herself, all right? She shouldn't be on the Board of Education. All we get from them is, oh, you know, we're trying to do the best we can and you're all in cahoots and it's all political and this attorney needs to be investigated as well, all right? Because I don't know how you could conflict somebody when that nonsense that's in that complaint about Chilla, it's just total ridiculous and I don't even think they had filed it at that point in time officially, all right? So, but you just do whatever you're told to do because after all, what can we expect from a guy who was at least once representing Mike Milam or Chris Milam or whatever his name is? Thank you. That's the indicted guy. See ya.
Nicole Lanuti?
Because you like to make up stories about me in a weird fantasy world.
Okay.
Remember the time I, I read your email?
You're out of order, Mrs. Lanuti. You're out of order. Sit down, be quiet, sit down, be quiet, sit down, be quiet. Mrs. Lanuti?
Yeah, I'm here.
Sorry about that, Mrs. Lanuti.
Again, I'm going to turn into him special edition one day. At the last meeting, we were talk-
I'm sorry. Can the officer remove him, please? Go ahead, Nicole.
At the last meeting, we went through listening to so many kids speak on begging not to cut sports. And all of middle school sports and three high school sports are on the chopping block among with a whole bunch of jobs. However, then we all of a sudden somehow came up with $15,000 extra a month to pay a superintendent when we already pay a superintendent. Where did that money come from? Did you know that we had that extra money previous to that meeting? And why was it never used to save the jobs that you are about to cut? It seems to be that maybe it was not utilized because the majority of this board knew to save it for when you carried out an orchestrated plan to remove the superintendent, that you would have to pay a double superintendent salary. Ironically, last year at the same meeting, it was accused that Dr. Hibbs and Ms. Wechter were hiding about $7 million. If that was true, did you find the $7 million and why is that not being used to save jobs and not raise our taxes? Since we know that we now have $15,000 extra a month since Jack has since stepped down, are we putting that extra $15,000 a month into saving some of these jobs that you are about to cut and not to raise our taxes? I had something else. I'll come back.
Dr. Hibbs has not been rice for this meeting, so we can't talk about anything related to his employment. People at the, yeah, we can't do that. As it relates to budgetary things, I'll just say that sometimes there are like emergencies and Janine has to figure it out. Sadly, that was one of those situations. Linda Keen? Please state your place of residence too. I forgot to tell everyone to do that. It's not on the card. Some cards don't even have the topic of discussion. That would help if you could fill the cards out properly.
But it's not required. It's not in the laws.
I'm standing here tonight as an outraged member of the public. What has taken place involving board member Connie Baker is not just a lapse in judgment, it is a clear abuse of power, a gross violation of board ethics and a direct threat to the integrity of this district. Let me be absolutely clear. Connie Baker created and submitted an organization chart to the interim superintendent, Mr. Jack McGee, that recommended by name which district employees should be terminated, demoted or promoted. She did this unilaterally, without board consultation and completely outside her authority as a school board member. This is not policymaking. This is not planning. This is an attempt to personally control employment decisions, decisions that should only be made through proper channels with transparency, input and due process. The fact that actual names of employees were included makes this even more egregious. These are real people with careers, with families and with the right to work in a district that respects ethics and process. What Connie Baker did wasn't just inappropriate, it was reckless, unethical and dangerously out of line. Worse, this behavior appears driven by a personal or political agenda, not the interest of the district as a whole, and the impact was immediate. Our interim superintendent, a man hired to bring stability, was so disturbed by this conduct, he resigned the very next day. That is not a coincidence. That is cause and effect and that is damage. Connie Baker's actions have put this board's integrity in jeopardy. She has undermined the trust of the staff, the community and the administration. And so tonight, I am calling unequivocally for Connie Baker's immediate resignation from the Washington Township Board of Education. If she does not resign, I expect and this community expects this board to take a formal vote of no confidence in her ability to serve. If you do nothing, you are complicit. If you allow this to stand, you are endorsing a culture where ethics don't matter and backdoor decisions are acceptable. The school district cannot and will not be governed by personal agendas or secret personnel lists. We are better than that. We demand better than that. Thank you.
Just to clarify a few things. The only time, that thing that you posted on your fan, your Board of Ed Fan Fiction page is, no one had ever seen that. So, there was no deliberation about anything in that. The first time I saw it was actually when Mrs. Chilla sent it to me. And so, when, you, you should not be saying that Mr. McGee, his resignation had anything to do with that. That's a mischaracterization completely. We can't talk about personnel issues, but his health is none of your business. And that's why he's not here and it had nothing to do with an organizational chart. So, I know that this gets you like likes and views and you feel good about that. That makes you feel good in your life. That's what you have. You don't even live here. You don't speak on behalf of the people that live here. And you certainly have no right to ask for someone on this Board of Education to resign based on, again, your fan fiction. Randy Ford?
I just, I just want to comment real quick. I want to comment real quick. I was a part of a meeting last Thursday and Julie, you were not in attendance. You were not there at the meeting. I don't know if we were going to be prepared to read Jack's letter and to why he departed. That's fine, we don't have to. I have never, in any year of serving on the board, been a part of such a disturbing meeting. I have a lot of respect for the former acting interim superintendent. He is a man of integrity and I will tell you that I think if anyone was in that meeting, you would have, absolutely have shed tears with Jack as to the way he was treated. And for anyone-
Carol, you're talking about, just be careful what you're talking about because you're talking about private meetings.
I will. Thank you. This was a committee meeting. I'm not talking about a private meeting. This was a committee meeting. So, I think that we should allow the ethics complaint that I filed along with Linda Hartong, who was also in the meeting with me. We both felt compelled to put forth a concern of an ethics violation. That's it. We're allowed to do that as board members. We felt as though it was so concerning, that's why we did it. And we'll let that play out. We'll let the school ethics commission rule on it. I just don't think that we should jump and make assumptions if you were not at the meeting. We just should say, there's an ethics complaint. I'm allowed to say that. It's public. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Ford?
Randy Ford, Washington Township. I have a few questions. The first one is that on the agenda, I believe there's a board resolution for additional expenditures and tax incentive aid. So I was hoping that since that's on the agenda, before it's voted on, there's going to be some discussion. I was curious as to what below local fare share and spending, below adequacy means. And then also if the board could elaborate on the four bullet points that are submitted for- And then also if the board could elaborate on the four bullet points that are submitted for approval. I see like support staff salaries, uh, some windows at I guess Chestnut Ridge, et cetera. So that's- that's one question. The second question is related to the doctrine of necessity. I believe the board invoked the doctrine twice, one on the 18th and one on the 25th. I have not seen the posting of the 25th invocation of the doctrine. So if someone could point me to where on the website that has been posted, I would appreciate it. Third, at the last meeting, I think during executive, there must have been discussions around suspension of the policy for Mr. Snyder to serve as both, I think, chief negotiator and solicitor. I was just curious if Mr. Snyder was in that meeting where he advised you on suspending the policy because there could be a conflict for him where his interests in serving in both capacities could be adverse to the board's interests. The other question I have is when did Ms. Miller become acting interim superintendent? If you have a date, that would be much appreciated. And then the last meeting, Lou Randazzo, who's a field rep for the New Jersey Education Association, I'm going to read something he said, and then I have a question about it. So during that meeting, he said, "I love the Fifth Amendment and love due process, but it has a cost, and to litigate those matters is very costly." And he was talking about some unfair labor practices. So he said, "To defend the board and district on these matters for that individual." "If that individual were to not return, I imagine the association's staff would likely withdraw those matters, and the savings to the district would be in the neighborhood of hundreds of thousands of dollars." So that's our position on the finances. My question, I mean, it sounds like a pretty good deal, right? If we're going to keep Hibbs out anyway, because there was a motion to try and bring him back, and you know, that failed. I'm just curious if it makes sense to try and get- I don't know if Mr. Randazzo and his representation of field representative for the New Jersey EA can speak on behalf of the unions and the bargaining units. I really don't know that. But if that is a real possibility, it might make sense to get that in writing. So then if you guys do decide to keep Hibbs out, then you could go and maybe settle those unfair labor practices charges. So that's just a, you know, question slash suggestion. And then the last question I have is during Ms. Lanuti's speech or, you know, presentation, Mr. Snyder had wrote a note, appeared on a piece of paper or a device and showed it to Ms. Kazempel. I was just curious what that said. Thank you and have a nice night.
I can speak, um- I'll speak a little bit about the resolution to- for the additional expenditures. So after we submitted the tentative budget, the Friday after we received notification from the state that we were allowed to apply to the Commissioner of Education to increase our expenditures, and it was an increase, we were allowed to increase our tax levy. The two factors that allowed us to qualify for this is that our budget, our '25-'26 budget is below adequacy to the tune of about $10 million. And according to the state, we're not taxing our community, and they're not paying their local fair share. So we were able to increase the tax levy approximately $10 million. Over the past couple of weeks, we had committee meetings and just ran some scenarios with the board, mostly just highlighting some of the cuts that, you know, were painful for us as far as staffing and the ones that caused us concern with being able to fill positions and, you know, safety and security of buildings. We ran calculations of how that would affect the tax levy. And then over the past couple of days, the board agreed on some scenarios. Within the resolution is what you see will be added. So an application has to be filed actually tonight after the meeting with the commissioner to increase the tax levy and add to the appropriation side of the budget for the items that you see listed in the board resolution.
Randy, just to clarify two things. Annette, and I can't see where you are, but Annette was not appointed as the acting superintendent officially. She is the assistant superintendent. Similar to a situation where the superintendent's injured in the hospital and not available out of town, she's simply subsuming those roles for right now while the board figures out what they're going to do. Obviously, they're working through that process. The second part of your question was, I was giving legal advice to the board president as to the standard for removal of a person from a board meeting.
April Renzetti?
Good evening. I'm going to try really hard to stay calm. This is really hard because for the first time in a year and a half, that Dr. Hibbs was here for two weeks, we were all able to feel a sense of safety and relief. And the fact that there are still people asking for this man to come back when you've had multiple people give you what they could without violating, things is appalling. Ms. Pittman, last meeting was my name. This meeting was my principals' and colleagues' names. Shut your mouth. Tonight, I am here to celebrate and acknowledge my fellow colleagues from every area that contribute to the success of our schools and the well-being of our students. On behalf of the WTEA executive team, I want to personally address the negative and false statements being circulated about us, whether on social media, because they have nothing better to do, or disappointingly from some of our very own board members. Please know that the executive team stands firmly behind you and supports all of you. We remain committed to advocating for your safety, your well-being, and your continued success in your respective roles, no matter the challenges you face. At the last meeting, I ran out of time and was unable to finish my points. Initially, I considered letting them go. However, after reading the press release about the meeting and re-watching the meeting to ensure I hadn't overlooked anything critical, I felt compelled to address them. In particular, I want to respond to comments made by Mrs. Clancy. As if hearing them during the meeting wasn't enough, I saw them quoted in the press release. You stated, and I quote, "I am appalled at what has been done to Dr. Hibbs. In my opinion, he was railroaded by certain people on the board and the union." First, thank you for attributing such influence to the union. With that being said, Connie, as the negotiations chair, I would appreciate a 10% increase for every union, since we have that much pull. We also acknowledge and understand that all can vote and how you see fit. But to constantly vote against the union, who are the teachers, is a statement that you never support our issues and concerns and contributes to two sides of the board instead of one group working together. To say we are appalled by your comment would be an understatement. Your stance and allegiance have been made crystal clear, along with others. In doing so, you have disregarded the very people you once stood among, the teachers. You remain a member of the NJEA Retired Teachers Union, yet you continuously oppose the concerns we bring to these meetings. Do you believe that we fabricate these issues? We just made them up? There isn't any fire to where the smoke is? We're just making this all up? He wasn't the bully that he was? We're just all meeting together and creating stories? Is that what you think? With that in mind, I urge you to stop claiming that you support teachers while you simultaneously dismiss the voices of the WTE members. The very educators you profess to stand with are the same union members you perceive as a problem, and we are one and the same. As far as the budget concerns go, we fully acknowledge that money is an issue. Major shifts must be made. However, please stop claiming financial destitute. When Dr. Hibbs was here, he spent an ungodly amount of money between salaries and capital projects. I would imagine all of his followers, Janine, have Oprah requested where his money was spent and how previously he spent it. I would imagine these people are doing their due diligence, and they're asking for that. Some of the things that were spent were asked upon and was- fell on deaf ears and wasn't answered. Again, I don't know, Janine, if you can answer me. Have any of those expenses been Oprah requested by his fan club? What he spent his money on while he was here? That everybody has a problem with the amount of money that we're lacking, but nobody is questioning the money that he spent? So are you able to answer that? Okay. 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 We just want to know if any of those expenses have been Oprah'd by his fan club? Yes, I'm done.
I- I don't- I can't- I have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of Oprah requests that I deal with. I can't think of- I can think of a couple in particular-
Okay.
-in particular expenses. I don't know if it had anything to do with Dr. Hibbs. I answer tons of Oprah requests.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If you want to call me, I don't-
Yeah, that's fine.
I just can't be thrown in the spotlight like that. There's hundreds.
Thank you. Also, um, we forgot to say Mr. Ford. I don't know- I don't know where he went. Oh, there he is. What Ari wrote to me on the paper was if I asked for someone to be removed from the room. Oh, you said that? Oh, okay. I didn't hear you say that. Okay. Sorry. I was looking at something else. Shereen Ducas. Apologize.
Good evening. I'm Shereen Ducas, WTA Middle School Executive Committee member. In these trying times, I find myself reflecting on the growing uncertainty and unrest in our district. The students, the faculty, and families who make up this community deserve better than confusion, division, and instability. Inspired by Langston Hughes's haunting question, "What happens to a dream deferred?" This piece captures the disarray we are living through each day. This is not just about policy or positions. It's about people. Our people, our kids, and the leadership they so desperately need. What happens to a district unled? Does it flounder like a ship lost at sea? Or sink beneath blame that's flung so fearless- freely? Does it scroll and seethe on posts and threads while solid solutions go quietly unsaid? Does it burn like staff's tired eyes scanning another change? Another new rule? Another new face? Does it crack from too many hands in the pot? Too many whispers, too few plans? Or does it simply implode? Once again, I urge our leadership, those still here and those yet to come, to work harmoniously and selfishly for the greater good. Put aside differences, quiet the noise, and bring calm and clarity back to our district. We need decisive, united direction now more than ever. I worry deeply that if we do not act with urgency and care, things may get worse before they get better. But I still believe we can reclaim the excellence and the pride that this district once stood for if we choose to lead together. I think that we have a team. The team needs to work together. We need the leadership and not the former leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ducas. Brandy Williams?
I would like to know, what is the plan to fix the budget? Is there currently a plan in place? Because if we just increasing the taxes, then we're just putting a blanket on it. So that's one of my questions. Also, are we going to hear a reason why McGee resigned? She said there was a letter. So can you read it if you have one? Also, can you also share the ethic complaint that you guys filed against? I don't know who you filed it against, but the one you guys referred to a minute ago. I'd like to hear it. And then I wanted to address with the attorney, Ari. With the- not speaking into the microphone, there's a lot of whispering. You're paid with our tax dollars, so I think you can give us just a little bit of respect of paying attention to the people that are speaking, making eye contact. Stop looking at your phone. Stop whispering and stop, you know, not paying attention to us. Sorry. All right. That's all I have. So can you answer my questions, though? What is the plan for the budget?
The plan for the budget is we will have a public hearing on the 29th to go over any of the changes that were made between the last time the budget was presented. And we met last week three times. I think we had three meetings last week. And, um, yeah, I mean, we're just taking feedback from the public and really looking at every aspect of the budget to see what can possibly be cut, what can be done more efficiently. And I guess that's really the answer to that. We can't talk about personnel issues. Mr. McGee gave us a letter saying that he had a health issue that was emergent that he had to take care of. And... Oh, ethics complaints? I'm- I'm all for people putting their ethics complaints out there. Is it, you know, you're asking to see just one? There are several. So... So, yeah, there are several filed against people up here, and not everyone has shared them. But that's up to the complainant to share it. I believe Janine said that even when people Oprah things, they are considered confidential, like the district can't give it out. So the complainant has to give that out. Okay. Jerry Tarashi?
So, uh, we are allowed, I am allowed, I'll speak for me. We are allowed to talk about the charges. I don't need to go into detail. That was never in my plan to begin with. But there are charges filed that can be public. That, um, there's a charge of a violation of 18A:12-241C. I'll confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. I'll help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. There's a charge of 18A:12-241D. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. And that's it. So those are the two charges in the complaint.
Prior to my presentation, I want to acknowledge a couple of things. First, Mr. Jack McGee is a man of the highest integrity. And if he decides that his reason for resigning shall remain private, we need to respect and honor his wishes. I'd like to also ask, Ms. Baker, your role on this board is part- partly to be in charge of negotiations. Is that not clear? That is not- not correct. It is correct. As your role in that area, are you allowed to make suggestions as to what takes place in regard to creating the budget, saving money for the district? The answer is yes. So whatever was posted may in fact just simply be recommendations or suggestions, which Ms. Baker is entitled to do. With that being said, I come here this evening with another presentation unlike the ones that I've basically presented in the past. This one is going to be done in a little different way. Years ago, we were a place where people wanted their children to come and learn. A place where people wanted to come and teach and work. Now we're not that anymore. So what has changed? What has changed is refusing to listen to those who best know. Listen to those who are on the front lines, working with the children of this community and who- are on the front lines, working with the children of this community and who truly care. Some of you claim to care, but you're lying. You only care about your own personal gain and political agenda. You have to stop all this nonsense and fix this. Stop fighting and recognize who you are really hurting, the kids, your employees. Stop this nonsense and recognize what has been created in this district. You've heard it from us repeatedly. You've allowed an environment to be created where academics, discipline, facilities, personnel are all suffering as a result of the decisions that have come from this board. That's not necessarily directly due to you because you've never been told. You don't get the information that you so rightfully deserve hearing. You've had a leadership who refused to let you know, refused to allow you to communicate with your employees, who tried to intimidate, bully, and turn over things like your emails, your text messages, all because they wanted to have control of you and what you thought. What is so unbelievable is why any of you, after hearing all of this, been witness to it, still want to have that situation returned. We shouldn't be that predic, that, in that predicament of finances that we're in right now. Someone or something is wrong. The financial numbers submitted by the district to the state that Mr. Uryle has cited different? Why are they different? They came directly from the state. Why are certain administrators leaving? Do they know or see something that they, they don't want to share with anybody else? Why is confidential board communications being sent out to social media? Who's leaking that information? Who on the board would benefit from that? I won't insult your intelligence in answering that question. That will eventually be exposed. For years, I've heard that elections have consequences. A couple of years ago, the board was different. Changes were made. How do changes work out? Academics have been suffering. Our support staff have suffered. Our teachers have suffered. Our kids are suffering. Now the board has changed again. So why question these consequences and these decisions by the majority of this board? Or do consequences only matter when you have the results that you like from elections? To all you critics, you social media know-nothings, stop bashing the WTA, the WTSSPA, and seek the answers to all those questions. You might wake up and change your opinions.
Can you please state your name when you get to the microphone?
Good evening. My name is Madison Ambrose. I am former employee 13176. I spoke at the last board meeting as well. I am here to speak on, you know, everything that's going on. I no longer work here as of April 10th, same day that our now former interim superintendent, Jack McGee resigned as well. And I just want to talk about, you know, I encouraged everybody last time to continue to ask questions, to look into what's going on. But I want to encourage people to not only look into what's going on here, but other districts as well. Similar things are happening in places like Cherry Hill, Yvcham Township. I'm looking for a job, so I'm looking at what's going on in a lot of these different school districts. I want to speak about what's going on as well with like the union. My personal story, I got up here last time and I told everybody that the union did not help me the way that I was hoping with the situation that I was in. I was terminated because I was being targeted by my boss. I was being harassed by my boss. And I continuously reached out to the union for assistance and I did not get the help that I was looking for. Then, after, that is not true. At the M.B.O.S. training meeting on March 26th...
We have to let her finish her comments.
Thank you. At the M.B.O.S. training meeting on March 26th, I was actually working past my scheduled hours just to assist the union so that they had computers that they needed for training. I was approached by the vice president of the WTSSPA and repeatedly what, you know, my personal issues were made apparent to everybody in that room. I was told that I was wrong about being assisted by the union, but that's not true. I had reached out to our president multiple times for help. In fact, there's a specific district policy that would have really assisted me back in November that just was completely overlooked. I wasn't assisted when trying to apply for FMLA. And in fact, the, the things I was being told by the union were really similar to what I was being told by my boss. So I am encouraging the people here, yes, your union should protect you. Parents, you need to start looking out for your children. I know that this is, I'm not saying anything bad's going to happen. I'm just saying, what you need to do, there's, there's a lack of trust in a collective, whether it's the board, whether it's your union, whatever. You need to look out for yourself. You need to ask questions for yourself. I know that this is, uh, we're trying to say that this is all, you know, fan fiction or that this isn't happening, but this is happening. I was fired. My life has been affected by this. So this isn't just some made-up story. People are saying on Facebook, maybe this note or whatever it is isn't exactly what we think it is, but if you're going to act like it isn't real or not even answer any questions about it, people are going to make up their own narrative about it. So I'm not asking for answers about it, but my life has been affected by this. This isn't fan fiction. This is happening. I don't know what's going on up at the level with the board. I know at the level of the support staff, people are being affected by this. Their salaries are being affected, their benefits are being affected. So start asking questions, start looking out for yourself. If you feel like something is wrong, if you feel like something is off, do something about it. Say something about it. Who cares if somebody is going to retaliate against you? Who cares if the entire union is going to be mad at you for saying something about it? At the end of the day, it is your life and you have to stand up for what is right. Jack McGee is a man of integrity. I personally consider myself a person of integrity. If there's something wrong, I don't think I should stand by and watch it happen. I feel like what the union did for me was not right. And if I can, can have my fellow union members or any other staff member know that if they feel like they're in a situation where they're stuck in a pot of boiling water, that if they're, they're smart enough to jump out and do something about it instead of being told that they can do whatever they want. They can do whatever they want. It's extremely tone deaf of a union president to get up here and support a board that just last year they were criticizing for cutting their staff. Thank you.
Hello. So Patty Sukalas, teacher at the high school for 25 years. I'm speaking to you today because we're in a budget crisis and I certainly don't envy your position to have to make the tough decisions on where to make cuts. What I'm requesting tonight is that you don't consider any plans to reduce or eliminate the basic skills instruction and intervention services within our district. The high school and the three middle schools saw cuts to the interventionists last year and we're struggling to meet the needs of our students this year. The data is clear. These programs are not just support services, they're proven high-packed, high-impact tools that drive student achievement, close learning gaps, and contribute to long-term academic success. I've been a math interventionist at the high school for the past three years and I can tell you that these programs are not luxuries. There are lifelines to countless students who depend on targeted support to succeed academically and emotionally. BSI and intervention services provide critical scaffolding for learners who are struggling, helping to close achievement gaps, and ensuring that no child is actually left behind. They are often the difference between a student falling through the cracks and a student finding their confidence, their voice, and their path forward. Our educators in the classroom rely on these services to help deliver differentiated instruction and meet the diverse needs of our classrooms. Without them, the burden on the educate, the general education teacher increases drastically, while the students who need extra help are the most to lose in, with this support system, without this support system. Furthermore, reducing these services sends a message that we are willing to compromise on equity and excellence. As a district that prides itself on inclusivity, inclusivity, and student-centered education, we must stand firm in our commitment to provide every child with the resources they need to thrive. I urge you to maintain the funding for BSI and intervention services. These programs are essential, not optional, for the success of our students and the integrity of our educational mission. Please consider the long-term consequences of this decision. And I'm not saying that there was one, I'm just because we don't have time before the, before the budget committee, so I wanted to speak because we were cut basically in half last year. Please consider the long-term consequences of this decision and the impact it'll have on the lives of the childrens and the families we serve. You know, as someone that's served as the interventionist for the past three years, I right now oversee over a hundred students myself, so I might look easy because I'm not in a classroom and it would help maintain classroom sizes. The impact that I have on these students maintaining relationships, it actually will reduce discipline, help them with their academic success with lack, with less retention with all these services. So again, I don't want the people in the public to think this has been cut or this has been brought up to be cut, but because the budget is being presented on the 29th and then it has to go to the county, I believe, by May 1st, I wanted to present this ahead of time for you to consider. We had two math and two ELA interventionists at the high school. We were reduced to one of each for this current school year and we are struggling to meet the needs of the students. At the middle school level, they had one math and one English at each of the middle schools. We're down to one ELA interventionist for all three middle schools because another one has been moved into the support service. I did see we approved finally a part-time ELA interventionist at OV. And then we have two math interventionists, one that works at Chestnut Ridge and Bunker Hill, and then one that is strictly for OV. So again, this is not something that has been said, something's been talked about, but because we were cut in half last year, I just wanted to present as to why I feel like we cannot cut this service again. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't want it to seem like a mic drop. All right. There we go. Hi, I'm an art teacher here in the district. I work at Orchard Valley. I stand here tonight representing our amazing VPA department at all levels. I'm here tonight to stand up for my students, the talented art program at the middle school and the VPA academy. I've never been up here before, so me being here, it's, it's really important that you understand that I'm here because I'm asking for help and for you to be aware. I stand here tonight because I feel confident and I feel comfortable. I didn't feel that way before. And I feel that you're willing to listen and I feel that you're willing to learn from our experiences that we want to share with you. I feel that I will not be told that I'm being disrespectful for asking questions and speaking up. I'm here to remind you and the parents at home watching tonight's meeting about the importance of the VPA programs. Why? Because nationwide, there's a correlation between high-performing schools and art programs. Because an education in the arts contributes to learning across all content areas. The arts have a unique capacity to engage students at three levels, emotional, intellectual, and physical, allowing for divergent learning, learning styles and intelligences. We reach all students in the arts. And in order to continue, we need your help. We have to put our needs of the students first. Please do not cut programs and funding. Please stop merging different level classes to save money. Doing this will have a long-lasting negative effect and impacts on our students. There has to be a better way. When you merge classes, a teacher cannot give 100% to each group. Students are becoming frustrated. Teaching a year-long course and a 10-week cycle class at the same time dilutes the program we claim to offer. Teaching a Level 1 course and a Level 3 course at the same time takes away from, the instruction from each group. Students suffer at the expense of this bad idea. I'm reporting tonight, this plan is a failure. It contradicts what we strive for here in Township and it interferes with the integrity of a quality VPA education. So how can we prepare our students for our academy if this is what's happening? I'm reporting tonight that the trial run that I was told, which was what I was supposed to do this year, it needs to be over. This is not what is best for our students. I take my oath as a teacher serious. I put my heart and soul into working with my students. I was taught to speak up when something's not right and for the sake of our students, we need to do what is right for them. This, they should not have to sacrifice a quality education and I'm asking you tonight to please look closely at what is going on in the VPA programs. Come to our shows. As Spencer said, please come out. Our district art night is April 30th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the high school. Come be amazed at what our students accomplish with minimal budgets. We don't complain that we have $6 to spend on each student for the year. We make it work. I invite you to see how we are getting by and consider ideas to help us fund and support to sustain and grow our VPA programs. We need your support because our students need us. Thank you.
There we go. Rob Scardino, WTA Executive Vice President. The WTA leadership would like to recognize and express our appreciation for our secretaries to the Board of Education this evening. The hard work and dedication, professionalism of our secretaries has not gone unnoticed by staff and administration alike. Each and every secretary within our district have all stepped up without hesitation, taking on added responsibilities wherever needed, going above and beyond, showing a level of commitment to this district, specifically to our students and staff and all that enter our buildings. And that dedication is valued beyond words. It should be recognized that the roles which once required two or three secretaries have now been thrust upon one individual in many cases and merged into a single assignment after many cuts. It should be understood that more responsibility means greater pressure, higher levels of multitasking, as well as increased time management and prioritization of tasks, and in many cases, longer working hours with secretaries often reducing or not taking their lunches to assure an efficiently-run building. This commitment to our schools goes beyond the scope of their job descriptions and makes them a true force that keeps our buildings running smoothly and efficiently. Our secretary's contributions and dedication to our district students and staff is not optional. They are the foundation and keep all buildings safe and running in a professional manner on a daily basis. We ask that when considering cuts, we no longer cut secretaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Bakiki? I'm not sure if I said that. Did I pronounce your name incorrectly? Can you just clarify?
Christopher Backish. I'm a resident of Washington Township. Longtime listener, first-time talker, so new here. I was actually home watching this and I drove over because I felt like something got glossed over a little bit. And it's that $10 million ask, which is really an ask from the taxpayer. So on top of the already raised taxes that we have, you're asking for an additional $10 million. Is that correct?
If you want to finish all your comments, then we'll respond, but no.
Sure, sure. That's fine. But it will come from the taxpayer, correct? Yeah. So, um, I feel as though maybe we haven't done our due diligence on the budget. I'm not exactly sure how it works, but I'm pretty sure the audit has not been released yet from the prior budget year. So how do you know where the money's going if you don't even have your audit yet? And now you- And now you're asking for more money when you don't even know where you're currently spending the money? Or maybe you do, but we don't, and that's a problem. As a taxpayer, I want to know where every single cent of my property tax money, which is 56 cents to the dollar that we give to this township, goes to you. Where is it all going? Where is every single cent? Where is a line item breakdown? I come from a finance world. That's what I do. I get everybody's here for the kids and teachers. I have four kids who went through this district. I went through this district, lifelong resident, lived here forever, planned to live here forever, although I'm not sure if that is attainable at the rate that our taxes continue to rise. Something else needs to be done, something more drastic, and maybe some people with more a business acumen rather than an education acumen should be looking at this to figure out what is the best way to both teach our kids and be fiscally responsible with the money that you're given from the taxpayers of Washington Township. So, I think, you know, it is a very difficult job for everybody up here, very difficult job for the teachers. I speak for myself. I don't dare come up here, Pittman lady, and say that I speak for everybody. There's no way you speak for everybody because you don't speak for me. I speak for me. And anybody in Township who wants to say that should come up here, just like I did, get off your sofa and speak for yourself. I will not let another person come up here and say you speak for me. That is not happening. I will speak for me. I will speak for my tax dollars. And I would like to applaud Councilman Pete Del Borella for posting this because that's the only way I found out that this was happening tonight. We are really not clear with giving out direction on when these meetings are. I get you may post it on your website, but a better way to probably do it would be on social media, much more than it's currently being done. And I only got a minute left, but I did want to say, you're all, this is exhausting. It's exhausting listening to you all fight back and forth and back and forth. Bottom line is, it's our tax dollars. Get your shit together and get it right. Get it right. I don't care that you don't like her and she don't like you, and you're all emailing back and forth, Oprah in every other second. It doesn't matter. It's our tax money. We voted you in. Do what's got to be done. Make the hard decisions if you have to. Keep the kids in mind, keep the teachers in mind. There's got to be places you can cut the budget in this town. There's got to be in this school district. There's got to be other places that don't affect the kids 100%. There's definitely a lot of administrators, if you look at the BOE website, maybe some of them need to go, maybe consolidate some positions. Start thinking outside the box. Think of it as a business. Think of it as your money, because for some of you, it is your money. None of us want to be paying all these taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine? Janine, Ms. Spector will answer the budget questions.
Yeah, so we were allowed to increase up to $10 million because when we submitted our tentative budget to the state online, according to their calculation, our budget is $10 million under adequacy. So, we were allowed to go up that amount. We're actually asking for a total increase of $5,292,000 and some change, but then the state gives us incentive aids in the amount of $252,000. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And then also, as far as the financials are concerned, our auditors come in in the fall and they have to upload all of our financial information from the year before by January 1st, and then we review and certify it. All that financial information gets populated into the budget software, so we have access to all of our audited figures when we're preparing this budget. And then, just to just kind of review the process again, in our March meeting, we have to submit a tentative budget to the county office. Once we submit it, the county office is in the process of reviewing it right now, and then once it's approved, it gets advertised to the public, and then on April 29th is when we have our public hearing on the budget.
Adrienne Choma?
Hi, my name is Adrienne Choma. I'm the middle school vice president for the WTEA, and I've been a middle school ELA teacher in the district since 2006. I'm also the chair of the WTEA Superintendent Liaison Committee. At the last board meeting, some board members expressed concern about some of the issues we were bringing to the podium, asking why they weren't brought to your attention sooner. I'd like to reference District Policy 1100. "All members and employees of this board are directed to observe faithfully the chain of communication established by the district organizational plan. The board expressly disapproves of any attempt to expedite the resolution of a problem by disregard of the organizational plan and the appropriate processes. A staff member's persistent disregard for the established management organization of this district, in violation of this policy, will be considered an act of insubordination subject to discipline. The WTEA has been following this chain of command. We have teams of WTEA staff members at each school who meet with the building principals each month to work together to resolve building-level issues. If an issue is brought to a building liaison two months in a row with no resolution reached, or if the issue is so pervasive it affects multiple buildings, the issue is assessed by the WTEA Superintendent Liaison Committee to determine if the issue needs to be brought directly to the superintendent. The WTEA Superintendent Liaison Committee members add these items to an agenda, and we present these items to the superintendent each month, and we meet together each month to work together to resolve these issues. Our understanding has always been that these minutes from our superintendent meetings are shared with the board. This is the chain of command we adhere to. If you are not receiving information about these issues that we're bringing to this podium and other issues that we're presenting each month at the superintendent liaison meetings, there's a breakdown at the top of the organizational plan, which is why we have resorted to bringing these issues to this podium. This breakdown is happening with information going up the chain and now coming down the chain. Why is information about resignations and position changes being released to social media before it is officially shared with staff members through district communication? Why are current and past board members participating in social media discussions, knowing full well that the district's social media policy prohibits WTEA and other district staff members from participating honestly in those conversations online? When past and present board members pick and choose which social media conversations to take part in, you are validating these forums as a valid means of communication. Parents and community members have a right to engage and share information, but board members, past and present, should be held to a higher standard, knowing full well that when you engage in conversations about district rumors and staffing cuts, the staff who may have more accurate or other clarifying information are prohibited due to the district's social media policy from engaging with you or community members in those forums. Thank you."
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Julie, I have a question real quick.
Wait, oh, hang on. Okay.
Can I ask a question? Why don't we get those meeting minutes? I mean, I've never gotten them.
I honestly, I don't know. I don't ever remember getting them, ever, but it sounds like something that we can definitely ask to start receiving. We should be looking at. I serve on a similar committee at my job. It's called Faculty Counsel. So, it's like there's 12 of us that take issues from the union and bring it to the president and talk with her. I don't believe any of that gets shared with our board. I don't know, but like, you know, I've never experienced that, so I just think that maybe we could, that's something that we should request. Melissa McNally?
Thank you. I can honestly say that at this point in my 25 years of teaching in this school district, sadly, I am embarrassed to work for Washington Township Public Schools. I've seen my fair share of crazy board meetings over the years. I've worked with some great and under some great, and also some less-than-perfect superintendents here, and I've seen some poor decisions be made and also, you know, some rather sound ones, but I've never really seen, and I don't mean to be rude, but I've never really seen a circus quite like this one, and I've never before felt that I truly feared for our school district, and I do right now. I fear for where we're going and where we're headed and how we're going to straighten it all out. From the name-calling to the finger-pointing, lying and hiding, it's disturbing, and I often think about what kind of role models we are to the young people that we educate because they're watching. We look ridiculous to the world around us. We are the laughingstock of the educational community right now, and many of our community members look no better. I keep searching for what we are gaining through all of this, but I can only see what we are losing, and I don't just mean respect, dignity, and a path forward, but also people, services, and standards within what we do. I've actually reached a point of hoping that some outside entity will sweep through here and clean up the mess, because I just, I really am struggling to see a way forward. One of the things that I do as the elementary VP of the WTEA is I represent members in times of struggle within their teaching and other job roles, and sadly, what I've seen this year are many situations where I'm called to represent people who literally can't do their job due to a lack of support, materials, or an overwhelming workload. Today, I represented a teacher who had a special ed student for the majority of this year with major behavioral issues in their class all year long, and they did not have a special education teacher in the classroom until February. Why? I have no idea. I've represented teachers who cannot teach because they have students with such major behavioral issues that they completely disrupt the teaching process, yet our admin continually fails to enforce the code of conduct. We keep taking more and more pieces of the puzzle away. Our kindergarten and preschool teachers have their work cut out for them more than they ever have. Our students are entering kindergarten not potty-trained, very little language. It's alarming, yet we're taking away things like kindergarten snapshot. Why? I have no idea. Why are we going to dissolve our LLD classrooms at the elementary level? I don't know. Why are we going to cut BSI down or interventionists? I don't have an answer for that. Just because something isn't required by law doesn't mean that it's not needed. Are we going to become the district that only does the absolute bare minimum? Because that's what I'm feeling in my role, both as a teacher and in the union. Silly little example of something that I kind of think speaks volumes, and this is a very small example, but my program at my elementary school used to have a budget of $3,000 a year for the program, for materials, or curriculum or whatever I chose we needed. My budget at this point is $300. That's $300 for 500 students. That's my budget. In the economy we're in and the way things cost so much more than they did 20, 25 years ago, it's embarrassing. I have to do things to fundraise to even support my program at this point. That's why I do the Kids' Heart Challenge and things like that. Our standards just keep going down. There was a time when I used to attend board meetings for positive reasons and I had good things to say. I remember standing before some of you, talking about the Herfill Read-A-Thon and how we were cooperating and doing all these great collaborative things, and now I feel I'm only compelled to represent the shortcomings that our members carry on their backs. I sit in meetings and shake my head at the things I learn when I question, how did we get here? And to the public, I'm very frustrated with hearing the negative comments about the union. Maybe you aren't really listening. We aren't up here asking for higher salaries or expensive materials. We're advocating for basic student needs. We're advocating for things like grading policies and dress codes and disciplines so we can teach and safety. Last month, I had to get up here and talk about how the code of conduct wasn't followed when a student threatened to shoot up a school. Okay, these are the things we're advocating for. Listen to us. We're not advocating for ourselves, and if you're listening, you know that because you've heard us speak again and again and again. If you start listening, you might find we're actually probably on the same team. We just happen to see the inner workings of the system here and have a clearer picture of what is broken. Stop advocating for HIBs and start advocating for kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Witcraft? Also, is Jeff in here? Jeff Walter? Is there any way we can turn the heat down a little bit? I see everyone's fanning themselves, and these lights are really hot. Did he leave? Can someone turn the heat down somewhere?
Hi, Heather Witcraft, Washington Township. As I said last time, thank you for your services to this community and your commitment to our students and staff, staff who are largely also residents here as well as parents of our students. The district hired a conflict attorney in November. I've heard he recently resigned as he himself is conflicted. How much were we charged for his services? How did we come to hire a conflicted conflict attorney? Was there no research done to verify his background, what happens to the actions taken, or any direction resulting from their advice and opinions? Thank you.
I wasn't on the board then, so, and I don't think I can talk about it, so Ari, I don't know what you want us to do about that. She wants to know about basically the status of the conflict attorney that was conflicted. How did you guys not know?
I think the short, the easy answer is the bills are definitely operable if you want to see what was charged, and obviously Janine would take the Oprah request and give you what she can with redactions. It's probably the best way to answer that question.
James Masadi?
Good evening. James Masadi, Washington Township. Wanted to start off, I've been a Township resident for what, over 10 years now, and only just started paying attention to the schools because my daughter recently entered kindergarten at Herfill. And my father-in-law's a retired superintendent, my wife's a teacher, my in-laws are teachers, school administrators. Have a lot of respect for the school system, for the folks sitting up on this board, and when I saw an opportunity to join the Community Task Force on the budget last year, I got really excited as an opportunity to engage with the school district at the same time that my daughter started in the school. To say that it's been disappointing would be an understatement. As I've watched the recorded board meetings, as I've started listening and paying attention, there's a lot of anger and divisiveness and just unkindness that is unbecoming of a school district like Washington Township. The behaviors that I have seen from community members, board members towards each other, board members towards other members of the community are things that would have my six-year-old be sent to the principal's office. And I've heard from the Education Association that they need support. I've heard from the community that they have questions and that they have concerns, and what I think we need a lot of is leadership, and we need healing, and we need kindness so that people can learn how to work together to resolve their problems. And I don't see that coming from the current board. I did not see it coming from the past board, and yes, there are a ton of keyboard warriors. I have found those Facebook groups myself, and you can go on there and find me, and I have defended members of this school board while also being critical of you. I think that we need to ask you guys as the elected leaders to please lead the way on finding a way to first work with each other, but also to bridge the gaps to work with the community and with the staff of all parts of this, to make Washington Township what everybody thinks it's supposed to be. I do have questions about the Community Task Force. We had a number of really great folks on there. I myself am just a data and analytics junkie, and so, you know, as soon as I started getting in there, started digging into a lot of information and really wanted to focus on how do we bring more revenue to the school and not how do we cut costs? I've got a lot of benchmarked data. I've shared a video on Facebook, and I'm happy to share it with anybody else, and I may come back up later and share some information, but we do spend a lot of money. We have the 34th largest school district in the state of New Jersey, and we have a budget that goes along with that size. But when you compare our faculty to student ratios, our administrator to student ratios, our support staff to student ratios, we're lagging behind. When you look at our test performance, we're lagging behind. I don't know what's going on other than to say that we have an environment that does not breed positivity, that does not breed the support that the students, that the faculty... not breed positivity, that does not breed the support that the students, that the faculty, that the administrators, and that the community needs to really drive the results that everybody here ultimately wants to see come out of Washington Township Public Schools. I really believe and really think that there is so much potential and so much opportunity in this school district. But so long as we spend our time fighting amongst each other, we will never be able to put the students first like we all want to. We all have different ways of wanting to accomplish the same goal. There are lots of people out here that will point fingers and will call names and will do all kinds of things. And they're going to happen. And I'm unfortunately sure that most of you, when you took elected offices, understood that that was a risk of the positions that you assumed. But understand that there is a thing that perception is people's reality. And whether it's true or not, that is what you are battling against. And I'm sure that we don't have the full story. You legally can't give us the full story, and that is frustrating to a lot of community members. I would ask that you speak with Ari and you try to find ways, creative ways, to try and engage the community, to try and engage the staff, and try and bring everybody together. We desperately need it. Thank you.
Motion to close to the public? I'm going to close first. Motion to close to the public?
I want to respond to that first.
That's fine, but I already have a motion, asking for a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Scott, go ahead. I said motion to close to the public, and he said second. I said all in favor. Yeah. Is everyone in favor of closing? Okay. Thank you. Scott, go ahead.
First, I just want to thank you for your service on the budget task force and everybody else that served. I enjoyed meeting everybody on there and thought there was great ideas, and the quality and experience of the people that served on that was amazing. I apologize it didn't go further than it did. January, I was no longer chair of that. We had other things we were dealing with, but I thought great ideas came out of that, and I appreciate your service there. Hopefully, something like that can be resurrected in the future, because I think we're going to need those ideas in the future. We'll talk more about that later. Also, regarding the question about how did we pick the conflict attorney and how would we pick an attorney that was conflicted, I can just describe that process, because I was chair of business at that time. So when the RFP goes out, the proposals come in, the business committee members go through all those proposals, and we have criteria by which we score and rank the proposals. Those are like, you know, quality of the proposals, number of lawyers they have, price, things like that. Through that process, it would be nearly impossible for us to identify a conflict with any of the attorneys unless they identified that to us. So I just wanted transparency on how that process occurs and why we probably didn't identify that the attorney was conflicted until he let us know of that. Thanks.
Julie, can I say something? I think it also needs to be said that we worked with our conflict attorney from September until January, and we didn't know about the conflict until December. So we were working all that time. And also, when you're all speaking, I've been thinking about the budget a lot and all the things that you're talking about. And I don't know how old all of you are, but not that many years ago, the public voted on the budget. Do any of you remember that, when that was the way it was? And I think we've become disconnected with the public ever since that changed. When that was taking place, I can remember I taught here and I was picking out a new curriculum for reading. There was a board member that sat there at every meeting to find out about the curriculum that we were going to choose, not to administer the district, just to have knowledge to take back to the Instructional Affairs Committee. I think the financial committee was a great idea, but I do think, Carol had talked about at one time too, we need to find a way to get the community and the staff, I think they should not have been left out, in my opinion, of the financial committee, and the board members. That has got to be something that we work on together. That's a big disconnect, because there is no feelings of trust with anybody right now. And I think that was the difference back then. Not only did you vote on the budget, that in itself has a certain different type of accountability, but you knew every step of the way what was going on. And we talked to parents when we chose a superintendent years ago, they had, again, they had staff that sat in on the interviews. I sat in on that. They had community members that sat in on that, as well as your board members. We got to fill out surveys. We were not involved in choosing the superintendent, but at least the board got feedback from what the public thought. And we have totally gotten away from that. I don't know if we can blame COVID. I don't know if we can blame the fact that the budget's not voted on by the public anymore. But I think me who keeps talking about goals of the board, that has to be a priority, because there's so much disconnect, there's so much not trusting of each other. And I think that's because there are all these barriers where we're not supposed to interact with each other, and that's totally ridiculous. Thank you.
Mrs. Blum, we have to do committee reports now. Do you want to start with IA?
Sure, I'll go right into that. All right, we had a meeting Thursday night. None of the things that we talked about are being voted on tonight, so we were just being informed. We talked a little bit about CUSAC. And Mrs. Gerber, can you help me explain what CUSAC is?
So it's a series of, every three years, the county comes out and takes an evaluation, and they look at us in different areas. The only area we've been evaluated thus far this year so far is in curriculum, so that's why we spoke about it in Instructional Affairs. We had our county ed specialists come and meet with some of our supervisors and our curriculum office team to review not only our curriculum, but certain mandates that are required by the state, where we are in that process. And then, from there, they go into a desk audit, because we upload all of our documentation and proof of PLCs and lesson plans and things like that, that they will then do from their offices and then ultimately give us a score. But right now, we only had the one area in which we've been evaluated. So that would be just curriculum instruction. And we have not heard any findings yet.
Okay, thank you. The other things that we discussed was, on the report cards, if you have children, you understand that for elementary, there are work habits that are listed on the report card. They're listed in the elementary schools and in the middle school. There's a pilot program going on right now of having work habits going on in the high school. No decisions have been made, and I think it continues into next year, but that's one thing that we talked about. We also talked about AI. Best practices are being reviewed throughout the district. The goal is to help our staff receive information on how it can be used effectively in our schools and classrooms at all levels. An expansion of the district's preschool program has been approved for the 2025 through 2026 school year. And again, Mrs. Gerber works very hard on that. A lot of the success in that program is because of her hard work and the people that work with her. The district is working on updating the policy pertaining to the school childcare program for staff members. Fees will be updated as well before and after school fees. The week of May 11th through 15th will be designated Special Education Week. It's a time to recognize our special education students and staff members. This is a yearly event in our district. The district received a grant entitled Nurtured Heart Approach. So far, four elementary staffs have been trained. During next school year, two of remaining elementary staffs will be trained. And we heard about this from Mrs. Grimaldi. She's in charge of guidance, and to me, it was a very exciting program to learn about. It highlights positive ways of interacting with children throughout the day, and it emphasizes what phrases or wording work best to promote a safe and positive classroom environment for all students. And it seemed like they also then have the students take over and start using those same words among each other to have kind words and encouraging words. Mrs. Chilla commented at our meeting on class scheduling for our incoming freshmen for the fall of 2025. She stated that the information shared with parents and students as schedules were being made was informative and much easier to understand for everyone. So this board was very happy to hear that report from Mrs. Chilla. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Business committee, Mr. Serrano?
Yes, thank you. So in our business committee, the individuals in attendance were Jack McGee, Janine Wechter, myself, Scott LaLiberty, Mrs. Cozempel, and Mr. Ross. Items discussed, the first item we discussed was the energy audit, the solar interconnection, possible solar interconnection, and upcoming approvals needed. Nothing that we're voting on tonight. I believe we had the budget discussion, which took up the majority of that meeting. Finance agenda was another item discussed, upcoming purchasing items. And Janine, I did want to ask you about Brown &amp; Brown. Is that something we're discussing next?
Yes.
Next meeting?
Yep, we're going to discuss that the next time.
Okay, understood.
That is just for the renewal for next year's rates. It doesn't have anything to do with the RFP for professional services.
Understood. All right. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Student Activities and Communications, Mrs. Baker?
Yes, the Student Activities Communication Committee was scheduled for Wednesday, April 9th, and it was canceled.
Okay. Anything else from committee? I have one thing. Just, I don't know who's, I'm sure, Mrs. Blum, you're taking as many notes as me, but some of the issues, I can put it in an email to you, that come up, I was hoping could go into IA, just different notes. I guess we can decide, you know, now. For instance, just answers to questions like, "Why did we take away the kindergarten snapshot?"
We were making a list.
Oh, good, okay. As long as you have that.
Keep going now, in case we missed it.
Okay. So I have that. I have, actually, I'm going to go back. These are all my notes from budget. Let me go back even more. The one was, well, particularly with the arts, the sharing of staff for, among the middle schools. You have that, okay. The interventionalist issue that came up. Just a history on why these things, you know, what the plan was when this came up. Oh, also, this goes along with the middle school, but the Mrs., I want to say, I'm sorry, Deborah. The teacher, Mrs. Larissa Danowitz, sorry, I did write it down. She said some teachers are teaching one level and three, one, level one and level three. I don't know exactly what that means. I wanted more information on that. If anybody else has anything, let me know. This is not this. Oh, the threat assessments. What are the threat assessments and how are we following them? And everything else is pretty much budget stuff, so.
I added the grading policy toe-toe, because I think we need to look at that.
Oh, yeah, for sure. That wasn't discussed, okay.
Now, the grading policy and the attendance policy needs to be looked at.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I know Mrs. Gerber was talking about that a little bit, so I didn't know if that came up. Good, thank you.
The code of conduct.
Could you please? She said the code of. Can you please speak into the microphone? Can't hear you.
The code of conduct seems to be something, again, not to administer, but to have a clearer understanding of how that's working.
Thank you. On to, okay, report of the superintendent, items one through three. Can I have a motion to approve items one through three, which is the HIB report, the resolution for Special Education Week, and the revised district calendar?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Abstain on one, yes to two and three.
Mrs. Cozempel?
Yes. Motion carries. Under Human Resources, can I have a motion to approve items one through 26?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Speaker.
Yeah, I just wanted on number 26, is that date incorrect? Document that I got said the 11th and not the 10th.
What was Friday? Was Friday the? The 11th. His letter said the 11th. I think she's right. That should be changed. Right? Yeah, it should be the 11th. Good pickup. Thank you.
Do we make an amendment to make it change?
Yes. Can we, Ari, how do we do, just say, on number 26, the date will be changed from 10th to the 11th, which is Jack's resignation. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Under Agenda Item 4, under Human Resources, extended school year, abstain on KH, yes to the rest. And on number 18, Ms. Chalamet, who has given up her resignation, I accept that regretfully. I want to thank her for all that she has done for many of the students in our district while she's been here. And I believe she was Teacher of the Year from Burches maybe last year. And it's really sad that we're going to lose her as a teacher in the district. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes, but I just want to ask, Scott, you usually call out the retirements, and when we're done the vote, would you mind doing that? Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes, but I do want to say I'm very upset about losing Mrs. Chalamet. She's a prize of the district, and it's sad that she's leaving for the reasons that she is or whatnot. But yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozempel?
Yes, motion carries. I have a list, if, are you ready?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Yamamoto, Wes Yamamoto, 25 years in the district, retiring. Mrs. Nancy Dickerson, music teacher at Bunker Hill, 28 years in the district.
Let's, Julie, real quick, we have to make sure it's Mrs. Dickinson. He's retiring, so.
Oh, I thought that's what I said. Mrs. Febo, Donna Febo's retirement, 28 years as a specialized instructional assistant. And Amy Mirman's retirement, 25 years, working as a science teacher at Bunker Hill. Thank you so much. That's well over 100 years cumulatively. Can I have a motion to approve the item under Finance and Facilities? This is the tax levy incentive application.
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I understand the board resolution, however, I hope my mic is working. I have a problem with agreeing with the percentage of the tax increase. So that will be why my vote is what it is.
Scott?
Thank you. So first, I just want to say I really appreciate all the work that the administration put in to, you know, then building the budget and coming up with this. I know they worked tirelessly, hours and hours of overtime, weekends, et cetera. So thank you very much, Janine, Gretchen, Annette, and everyone else. So thank you very much. I also appreciate that administration worked tirelessly and found a way to get the three high school sports that were cut back in, and that was in under the 2% cap amount. So I really have to see that. But unfortunately, I can't support the amount of the tax increase that we have here that we're asking for. It's 7.39%, almost 7.4%. That's on top of about 4% last year. And, you know, if you remember, right, it's similar, like deja vu to where we were last year, I said, "Hey, we're probably going to be in this situation." vu to where we were last year. I said, hey, we're probably going to be in this situation again next year, because what we're putting in place isn't going to fix the problem. So rather than just replay the tape, I'll say it again. What we're doing this year is not going to fix the problem, and we're going to be in this situation again next year. Last year I predicted we'd be 5 to 7 million in the hole, we ended up 11. I'm predicting we'll probably be 3 to 5 million in the hole next year. How do I know that? And how to do math, right? I can add what the contractual raises will equal, I can estimate what the health benefits increases are going to be, et cetera. And you're going to have a 2% cap next year, so we're going to have a shortfall. This increase is irresponsible, and I'm sorry, right? I mean, I'm a business guy. I look at things as dollars and cents. And you call me cold and heartless, I've been called that a million times, but I have to put those pieces away and look at it from a business perspective. And we're just not fixing the problem. Where we're putting this money is just going to make the problem worse for next year. The, you know, one positive thing, a little bit of money that they're going to infuse for capital projects, that'll create a little bit of a buffer for next year, but it's not going to be enough. What's being added in other areas is going to make this unsustainable. So, that's why I'll be voting no.
So, I'll just comment real quick. The reason why I'll be voting no to the tax levy is because I just have some concerns about the cuts that are in the budget and some additions. So I just disagree fundamentally with those cuts and the additions, and that's why I'll be voting no.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
No.
Mr. Chilla?
No.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Cozempel?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Nothing under Special Education or negotiations? Any items of new business?
Yeah, I got one.
Sure.
So, when I was a novice on the board, I guess I'm probably still a novice, only been my third year, and I was on negotiations. And I said something on social media that was intended to be a kind words of support to our support staff, and I think was misinterpreted, or could have been misinterpreted. But in the interest of, you know, sparing the board from any controversy, I resigned from negotiations. And I think that some of us other board members here should think about any of the situations that we might be involved in that could be embarrassing to us as board members, or us as a board, and think about the positions that you're in on committees and others, and think about whether it would be in the best interest of the board for you to potentially step back from those roles. I'm just going to leave that consideration for people to think about.
Okay. Any other comments, new business?
New business? I think we talked about this several times, and it's never really happened. There's clearly community members that have come up, and I forget that, is it Mr. Betchich? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that. You know, and it was also Mr. Misati and others, asking for us to come together to do some planning. I think we've talked about a board retreat, I don't know, maybe two years, that has never happened. So, we, I think there was a presentation given at the reorganization in January 7th that was elaborate in terms of planning and all of the things. So I think that once we get done the budget, April 29th, my time is limited here, right? I have till December 31st, when I've fulfilled the longest penance I've ever served, but it will be done December 31st. I think it would be beneficial to at least have some kind of a meeting retreat to at least set up for the next board, and where we go from there. Because again, we've talked about it, January 7th it was discussed, and we haven't done anything around it, because we're, it's always a fire drill in some way. The community's asking, the staff is asking. I think that we have to, by the next meeting, maybe if there's by way of email, to get together a few dates to do that, and sit together and do board work, and figure out and plan strategically, what does the remainder of the year look like? What are the big topics and priorities, obviously, once we get to the budget? So, I'm just asking if, you know, if you agree or don't agree, whichever, if you do agree, to, you know, email maybe Lori some dates and some possibilities, because I think the longer we go out, it's almost May. We haven't done that since Ja, we haven't. We talked about it and we didn't do it. So I think that we have to get back on track and start doing those kind of things as a board.
I completely agree with that, and I also would like to make the note that it starts with responding to emails that are about board business and showing up to meetings. I think if people even just did that bare minimum, that would help. There are some people that don't respond to emails continuously. I'll say to Janine, did you hear back from all nine? And there's always one that we haven't heard back from, or two, that just completely ignore emails. And, but, if it's about ethics, fighting, things like that, it's constant response all night. And so, if you're one of those people, then maybe you should think about how you're working on the board, and would a retreat help you if you're not even responding to emails or attending meetings?
I agree.
You're right, it's not. And I also would like for everyone up here to make a pledge to stop making your decisions based on what you think people on Facebook are going to say. Because we need to listen to the staff that's in the room with us and each other. That is such a small byproduct of this town, and it is a toxic environment. I'm not even on Facebook, so I don't know what happens. I don't get the emails, I don't have, you know, I don't want that in my life. And on a weekend, when, you know, I'm getting emails from some of those people, and people letting me know what's being posted, I'm like, it's 80 degrees outside. Like, even just for your mental health, do something else. It's really, it's really scary that people will go onto a Facebook group and completely change their opinion about someone that they've known their entire life, just based off of narratives. All of us were on that page. All of us were blocked, except for four of you. The four of you that are on that page, I'm not saying about any specific person, but if you're on that page, I don't think that's appropriate as a board member to be on that page. I don't think you should be commenting there. And I think when confidential information is found out by people, and two days later it shows up on that page, that says a lot about the relationship between the people on this board that are active on that page and those of us who are not. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Just for the record, just for the record, first of all, there's five of us that are on that page, not four. I looked at it the other day. And second of all, I'm a parent, so I deserve to be on a township parent forum page. I'm, I am a parent before I'm a board member. And if there's something going on at the, at the school, as a parent, I deserve to know what's going on.
Yeah, all right. So, I'm not even active on social media, except for business LinkedIn. I stopped being active on social media when I got, you know, involved with the board and had a little run-in there with, with social media that caused me to step off of negotiations. So, I couldn't even tell you what pages I'm on, first of all. Second of all, I have the right to be on whatever, and everybody up here has the right to be on whatever group they want to be on. What they say on those groups, they can be held accountable for. But just being a member, that's different. Secondly, I'm not making a pledge. That's what I was elected to do, was to serve the best interest of this district, right? I don't care what people say on Facebook. I have no political aspirations to ever touch anything political ever again in my life, and I won't be rewriting for this board. I do what I think's right, I do what I think's in the best interest of this district, and that's it, period.
Julie, could we also make sure that we, I keep saying it, that we work on board goals and district goals, because actually, that's part of what should be included when you're doing your budget, especially your district goals.
I agree. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Randy Ford.
Randy Ford, Washington Township. Just a couple things. There were a few questions, and I know I had a lot at the public set, or the public portion for agenda items, but I didn't get answers or comments to the question about the suspension of the negotiation solicitor policy, or where on the website the doctrine invoked on March 25th was posted, and then also with respect to Mr. Randazzo's statement. So, if at some point, that would be great. I really liked what Mr. Misati said, James, around trying to find an idea or a way to bridge the gap among board members. I've been coming and listening to these meetings for 13 or 14 months. The one thing I think everyone can probably agree on, and maybe not admit, but is to get rid of the 50 grade floor, right? I mean, that's all I, all I hear is people can skirt by, or students can skirt by in the second semester of the year, and I've never heard a single person ever defend it. So maybe that's where you all can unanimously agree, or, you know, anonymously agree to. The other thing I would say is, with respect to transparency, I'm somebody who Oprahs things on a regular basis, because I want to understand. I'm a parent with three kids in the district. They're all in Hurfield Elementary School, which is filled with awesome teachers, awesome principals. They're absolutely incredible. But with that said, there's things that I think this board could do to be more proactive with respect to transparency. One thing would be, every committee could have a proactive statement of what they've done since the last meeting. I know most of them were tonight, but negotiations yet again. No activity since the last, at least just, just say that, so we're not left wondering, right, as to what happened. The other thing is, I know these meetings are posted on the website and on Facebook, but every parent gets Parent Square notifications. Why we're not using Parent Square to notify people of the meeting and the agenda, I don't understand. I think it's free. Mr. Distillio could probably, you know, tell me whether there's a limit to the number of posts that can be sent out that way. The other thing I'd like to see, our meeting minutes are ultimately held for quite a long period of time. I know there's no set rule in stone in the law that says how quickly, but maybe what could happen is, by the next meeting, the draft minutes from the prior meeting are provided to the board, and then you all vote on them. So then people that can't make, or don't want to listen to a five-hour meeting, can review those meeting minutes. I also Oprah committee meeting minutes. Those could be proactively posted on the website, so then, again, Janine doesn't have to get an Oprah from 18,000 different people in the district. So that's one way, if she can post it out to everybody, and then Mr. Snyder can tell you that if someone sends an Oprah request, and it's something that's publicly available on the website, it's as easy as an answer of, hey, it's already on our website. Also, I'd like to see the entirety of these meetings, not the executive session, but the entirety of the meeting posted onto YouTube or however WTTV. March 25th, there was a meeting where I came at 5:30, when the meeting was posted as starting. Typically, I think the, what usually happens is, the board makes a motion to come into public session, and then immediately goes into closed session. Instead, that meeting had a 20-minute public meeting, where the doctrine of necessity was invoked again, and the public who can't make it out, or follows a notice that says public will be excluded from the executive portion of the meeting, shouldn't have to be left wondering what happened during that meeting. So if you have something at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, post the start, and then immediately go into executive session and put the little blue logo up, you know. Let's just see. Oh, and item 26 tonight on the human resources, it'd be great to, if, and again, from an interest of transparency, people come up, the first public session's supposed to be agenda items. No one knew until you just voted on it that there was agenda item 26. I saw it on the website about a half, or 45 minutes before the meeting started, but the printed versions, for those in the back, do not have item 26 on it. So, I think that would be nice if you told the public, for those items that you know about are being added, that were just added in an hour or two before the meeting, that we know what they are. Thank you very much.
Some of the items you mentioned are not things that we do. I mean, these are unpaid positions, so, you know, posting things and printing things, we don't have anything to do with that, but noted. I'm not going to address anything about what Lou Randazzo said, because that would be talking publicly about the union stuff, we can't do that. The doctrine, Ari, do you want to mention? Why wasn't it posted for the meeting on the 25th?
I didn't know that it wasn't posted till you said that. Ah, so I need to talk to Janine, and we'll figure that out.
Tom Baldassaro?
Hello again. I want to mention, you know, this is going to tie into the budget and the tax increase. It's policy 6210 fiscal planning. One of the requirements that, by your policy, is to have a five-year plan. To, you know, Mr. La Liberty talked about how it's irresponsible to, you know, last year, we didn't fix the problem. This year, we're not fixing the problem. I said the same thing. It's malpractice when you go through a riff to not fix the problem, because then you get there every year. I had sent you an article a while back about the Philly School District. They, you know, they published their five-year plan, basically. The superintendent talked about it, and they had to use $300,000, $300 million from their reserve to cover their budget, and they said in five years, they're going to have a $2 billion gap. Do you guys have that information? Do you know, you know, other than the math that, you know, Scott did, what our gap is for next year? Because those should be informing the decisions you make now. It's so disturbing to hear Scott say that some of the decisions you're making today are going to make next year worse. That's irresponsible. That's the definition of irresponsible. You know, every employee that works here has a right to, to be paid a fair market salary. That's what we need to ensure. You figure that part out, and then you figure out how many people you can have. We should never hear people say people are leaving because they're getting paid $4 an hour somewhere else. That should never happen. There's not enough planning happening. You're reacting constantly, and you're putting it on the taxpayer. You know, you keep talking about what you can do. Yes, you can increase taxes for $10 million. I told you, there's only 11% of municipalities in the state that pay a higher tax rate than we already do now. So you can do it, but it's wrong. It's 100% wrong. If you're making decisions today in this budget that make next year worse, what are you doing? Why would you do it? I appreciate the people who, who voted no on the tax and told us why, but I would love to hear the people who voted yes tell us why. Tell us why it's okay to create a budget gap for next year, while you're raising our taxes 11% over two years. If they give you the ability to raise it 10, is that going to be what, what solves your problem next year? Next year, planning starts with this budget, and you failed. 100%, you failed. It's not how we support our students. It's not how we support our teachers. When you're in a constant state of panic and reacting, there's no, nothing is going to move forward. And I think that's what everybody wants. Everybody wants to move forward. But it's... What's our gap in five years? If, you know, if the Philly gap is going to compound 12 times over five years, what happens if that's ours? You know, who's going to get hurt? It's ultimately going to be the kids. You cannot just keep raising taxes to fix the problem. You know, you talked about, you know, a forum where people might talk, and you know, part of the problem is when, sometimes when you could ask legitimate questions, you guys don't respond at all. Like, I talked earlier today about, you know, our food service, we pay $112 per student. The average is six. 85% of school districts in this state, it's zero. Does anybody have a concern with that? Does anybody say that should be the first million dollars that we fix? I don't care how you do it, but your goal should be to get there. But I brought that up, and not one person, not one responded to that. It's a legitimate question. That is the first thing you should all be looking at. The money where you're way above what your peers are at, but I got nothing. So it's very frustrating when you ask, might be a hard question, but I got nothing, no response. And that's irresponsible too. Tell us you're going to fix it. Tell us you're going to get into a room. Tell us before the budget's final, we're going to figure it out. Tell us we'll fix it by next year. That's the part. If you make a decision today and don't look at it, and you make a decision that commits you to something for five years, irresponsible and you're not using your tax dollars appropriately.
Thank you. Ron Lucarini?
Yeah, the $5 million increases, I just figured it out, the average homeowner, what does it come to? They usually give that information, so maybe Janine can tell us what the average increase is going to be, the average homeowner. But what I hear tonight is a lot about respect. You know, we don't get enough respect, and the sides have to come together, or the split has to come together. But you can't come together and, for instance, Mr. Deliberty, he can't vote yes to a budget just to show that he's coming together if it's irresponsible, right? It would be nice. It would show that we're all together. Ralph would be happy, and all the politicos up there would be happy. But you can't come together and respect people when they don't respect ethics. All right? This is the school system, and the people up here from the WTEA who come up here and say that we have discipline problems, we have, you know, academic problems, they are absolutely accurate, but to portray an image that it happened with Dr. Hibbs walking in the door, and I'm no fan of his, I'm not a fan, it didn't happen when he walked in the door. It happened while she was president of this Board of Education and maybe some of the things that were in the works along the way. But when you have a person who sends an email to someone saying, this is my scheme to pick the next superintendent, my best friend, who I dance with, okay, and then lies and says she never sent it, and then is part of an ethics complaint, then apologizes, and then resigns, and then you people stand there and clap for people like Mrs. Bloom, who can't give us a direct answer as to why she would vote for someone like that for president of the Board of Education. Instead, what Mrs. Bloom does is she starts attacking me and sends, you know, maybe she'll send her husband up again, and then we get Mr., whatever's his name, Arpino, talking about, and the people in this room clap for these people. It's a disgrace. We, you want academic improvement? I say you improve academically yourselves because if you took a multiple choice test based on common sense and ethics, if you took an ethics test based on what this Board of Education does and the decisions they make, you'd all fail it, okay? Well, at least the political whorehouse five would fail it, all right? And that's what we have here, a political whorehouse, and the, if you notice, we don't even read the room properly because every resident who's not affiliated with the school system that came up here tonight, I don't consider, I don't say they're all negative, but they weren't all positive, they weren't all cheerleading for this, okay? And yet, our teachers want respect, but the things that have been going on in this district for years, including political hiring and whatnot, and the description that young lady gave up here about how she wasn't supported over serious issues, that went on all the time, and that was even before Julie Kozempel, okay? They've been wheeling and brewing with the administration and the Board of Education for years, for years, all right? But, you know, don't come up here and blame this one guy, who I could care less about, to be quite honest. Don't blame him for the problems in Washington Township, all right? You're part of the problem. You knew these discipline problems existed. You never came, I've never seen, in other districts, I don't know which one I read about recently, they came out and are protesting, not against the Board of Education, but they want stricter discipline in the schools. Where have we been? I come to these meetings, I haven't heard too many conversations. Tonight was the first time I heard a conversation about education from a couple of people over there, but most of the time, nothing. It's all about this nonsense, and that's what it is, all right? And for Jerry Terracci to get up here and start saying things like, well, you know, indicating that it was Dr. Hibbs's fault, no. We all bear the burden of that, and it was going on long before Hibbs, okay? You can't have three board presidents all resigning under a cloud of ethics in one year and then sit there and blame Hibbs when he picks up the ball and has to carry the, you know, this pile of shit. That's what this district has turned into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Murphy?
Hey, good evening. So just a couple of things about the Facebook thing. I think there was a reference to your use of Facebook, and then someone made a comment, if you're a former board member, you shouldn't be on a site, and something about the district policy for employees. I'm not an employee, and I am a volunteer, I was a volunteer board member. I'm rarely on Facebook. I may be in a group, I don't know if I'm in that group, and if I post, I mean to post, and I do it with integrity, and I take a position on an issue that I know a little bit about. So I'm, I'm just going to say I have a constitutional right to do it, and if that, that's not going to change. With regard to, a great point, Pat Bloom, with regard to voting on the budget. I was elected in the last April election where we were allowed to vote on budgets in 2011, and guess what? You all can do it. You can move the election back to April. The council can move the election back to April, and you could do some kind of resolution or referendum to move the election back to April. And what is game by doing that is you get to vote on the budget every year. That would be great. I'd be 100% in on moving the election and voting on every budget. So, good point. The other thing I want to say is, you mentioned goals. Every single board meeting that I come to, I look on the website to see if those goals are up there. Are they up there? I looked, I looked today. But you know what? I'm going to tell you what my interpretation of what that list would look like, and it would only be one thing, fire the superintendent, because that's all I've heard about since I've been watching these meetings. Now, I didn't come here to talk about ethics in my office at home. I have 11 or 12 packets for all of you guys in rebuttal to Ms. Kozempel's statement about our ethics case. Back in May of 2022, I stood before the Board of Education, and I told you that I was filing the first and only ethics complaint I ever filed in my life, and I did it on behalf of three district employees that had been what I considered defamed or affected by the reading of personnel information between, of a, between a text messages between Connie Baker and Julie Kozempel. And it was defamatory to those people, and it was absolutely uncalled for, it was unboard related, and they used the dais to do it. And when I talked about filing that complaint, I told you exactly what three ethics violations were committed. That was May of 2022. When I filed the ethics case, five out of six counts were transferred by the School Ethics Commission, or what you hear, we talk about the SEC. And the SEC sent a report to Ms. Kozempel and myself, and it had a resolution, like you guys approved, where the SEC voted to move that case to the Office of Administrative Law, which is the OAL. Ms. Kozempel, for three years, came up to this podium and sat over there and said, no probable cause was found in that case. That's a lie. There's no other way to say it. Then she said, for years, the case has been dismissed. We heard it before she ran for reelection, we've heard it on both sides of the dais, the case has never been dismissed. It's still not dismissed. But last meeting, she said it was dismissed. She also said it was no big deal, and one of the, one of the three, she was found guilty of a third of the ethics components of the state ethics code for board members by the judge at the OAL. A third. One of those that bothers me the most is failure to protect school personnel. So when you have leadership that thinks it's no big deal to fail to protect school personnel, and then you have another board member pass or submit her own organizational chart to this acting superintendent with list of names, employees, their salaries, what jobs were being collapsed, and then I sit here and listen to the discussion, and I hear, and I don't want to misquote anybody, we did not distribute it, as if it doesn't exist. It exists, because Jack McGee received it, and you know what? In that case, Jack McGee is going to testify. Jack's a man of integrity. I've never had a discussion with him. I didn't know about this, but I guarantee you, Jack's going to talk about what the hell happened with that organizational chart. Who gave it to him? Who else talked to him about it? So when you sit up there and say, it doesn't exist because we weren't going to use it, you affected school personnel, the same exact provisions Ms. Kozempel was found to have violated in my ethics complaint. And you've got people sitting in this room whose names were on that list, whose jobs were cut. You don't think that's problematic? Now, I don't get, and I wouldn't stand up here and say this, I actually had all that stuff to show you, because I come with charts and graphs to take a position on something. That was important to me because nobody, if I said to you, all of you guys out there, someone was going to read a text message about you not being tenured and about your wife in the district and about your performance, right? And all the, and it's about your job, all of your jobs, and you're going to watch that on television. What I want you to do is put your name in that spot, and then think about what it was like to go back to work the next day.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Randy Williams?
Hi again. I want to say, stop with the whole Facebook stuff. You guys have been spending way too much time on it, more time than what we really need to be addressing, and we're not going to get off Facebook. This stuff's not going to go away. We're going to keep paying attention to what's going on. So I do want to address, with the raising of the taxes is just a quick fix. You said, oh, we're allowed. Just because we're allowed doesn't mean we should have raised it. I'd like to see is where can we see the line item breakdowns of all expenses, like all the way down to the pennies that is being spent? It should be accessible. So when can we see it? Where can we see it? And if we can't, why can't we? If it's our money. Are we taking advantage of any additional grants? Does the board actively look for new grants? There's so much money out there. Are you guys doing anything? Is anybody looking at that? Does somebody actively look at that often? Audits. What's the status with the audit? What's the status? Is it finished? If so, when and where can we see it? Is that going to be public? There's just a lot of secrecy, like, this is our money, but yet we're not allowed to know anything. And I want to address that our kids are not getting a quality education, and that's no fault of the teachers at all. The teachers, I keep hearing, come up here, and they're begging you guys for help. What is the board doing to help them? I just keep hearing all these other excuses and fighting, but every teacher that comes up here, they are begging for help, but you never address it, and it doesn't seem like nothing's being done. Like, are the policies being changed? For example, the dress code, someone mentioned, attendance, scoring, discipline. Scoring was a big factor in the last meeting. Everybody kept complaining about. What are you guys doing? It just feels like the teachers are so stressed out, and that really does affect our kids, even if you don't want to believe that. And I also want to understand is, like, school used to be so much fun to learn, like, it used to be really engaging, activities, field trips, experiments, assemblies. It doesn't feel like that with my son. Like, he's starting to hate school. It's just like you pack so much stuff in there because the teachers have to get so much stuff done. And then you mentioned, I just, first I'm hearing this, is you're cutting kindergarten Snapchat. That's why? That's really important. Like, I, when my kid went to the Snapchat, and then when I had the meeting with the teachers, they were able to, like, just tell me, like, this is where your kid scored, this is what he's doing, dah 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 dah. Why would we take that away? Pat, I just want to address that your, all the information that you were just saying about how you guys should vote and the position of what you're saying, the position that you take, I'd like to see, it sounds like a good idea, but I'd like you to take the lead then. Like, all that whole speech that you gave to us, do something about it then. You're saying it, it's great, you guys get up here and you say things just to take the heat off of you. Do something about it. Show us you're listening. Be transparent. Like, you're just ignoring, it feels like you're ignoring us, that's what it is. It's like you don't want to pay attention because, you know, it's not your problem because you're not paid. It's the role that you fought for, so show us that you're listening. And really take the teachers seriously. Thank you.
Terri Schechter?
Hello. First, I'll just repeat the question. It doesn't seem to have been addressed. What was the reason behind the suspension of the policy for our solicitor to act as both on the negotiation committee as well as our board solicitor? Is that going to be a permanent change going forward, and was that discussed? I'm really appreciative of the people who come in this room. I'm happy to see some new faces who are also tired of the negativity, and I understand that it is a very frustrating process as a parent to try and learn the facts. I come here, week after week, month after month, I participate, I make Oprah requests, I try and talk to board members, and I try and respectfully come up here and talk about process and actual facts rather than rumors. However, I think it's irresponsible to continue to talk about frustrations in social media when there's an absolute vacuum of truth and communication coming from the Board of Education. I've come here, meeting after meeting, volunteering not only myself, but speaking for parents who are, don't have the luxury and the opportunity to come here, that would happily participate in engaging with the board and presenting the facts. So I can respect that. You are all, most of you up there are all volunteers and are doing the business of the board and don't necessarily have time for, you know, duties as assigned, if you will. But there are people who are willing to engage and are trying to do so respectfully and engage in the facts. So I would appreciate if we can move forward with some of those things, because I think, to several board members' points up here, while I am very concerned about the tax increasing votes, I'm concerned about the ethics violations. I could really rather not talk about that ever again. I'm sure as many of you up there would rather not have to talk through those things again as well. I see us here next April, talking about the same thing. I think it's going to be substantially worse, and we're, just like last year, not doing anything to proactively address it. Thank you.
Nicole Lanuti?
Earlier this meeting, Julie, you had mentioned that Janine had to find emergency money. Isn't staff leaving and the noncompliance of our district an emergency? Aren't students unfulfilled IEPs an emergency? Staff being pushed to 5.7 hours with no benefits that they're begging you for, how is that not an emergency? These children are, these individuals are our children's right hands with the most disrespectful pay scale, and that has never been seen as an emergency. Did anyone ever listen to the support staff when they came up here? They have emergencies. They have for years. Birch is housing MD at 62% staffing. How is that not an emergency? My kid, among others, missing 90% of extracurriculars.
Earlier this meeting, Julie, you had mentioned that Janine had to find emergency money. Isn't staff leaving and the non-compliance of our district an emergency? Aren't students unfulfilled IEPs an emergency? Staff being pushed to 5.7 hours with no benefits that they're begging you for, how is that not an emergency? These children are, these individuals are our children's right hands with the most disrespectful pay scale and that has never been seen as an emergency. Did anyone ever listen to the support staff when they came up here? They have emergencies, they have for years. Birch's housing MD at 62% staffing, how is that not an emergency? My kid, among others, missing 90% of extracurriculars that she is so very deserving of, how is that not an emergency? How is fixing your ethics and personal agendas an emergency over our children and our support staff? Staff and parents have begged for help. Where was this emergency money at that time? Your director of special ed resigned. Why? She's phenomenal. Melissa Chalmate is on the agenda tonight and you approve for her to resign. She is irreplaceable. Why are these people leaving? Why has much of our support staff left? Why is Birch's at 62%? Have any of you cared enough about why and how it got to this point? Are people like this leaving not an emergency? Is anyone worried about who's gonna follow and how many people are going to follow? Do you have a plan for when that happens? It is not an if. You have no plan for the budget? You have no plan coming up? What is the plan when more people leave because of this? I said in a previous meeting, you're bound to lose staff because of budget cuts and poor previous planning. What are you doing about the staff that you're losing that's not even affected by budget cuts? You can't lose both. Mr. Trash, you made a great point. Listen to the ones on the front lines. Why did no one listen to our special ed staff and support staff as they begged for help over and over? Julie, you said, listen to the teachers. Did anyone go back and watch, re-watch Michelle May beg for help at the last meeting? Did anyone look into anything that she said? Did anybody look into anything that any of the support staff or any of these parents have previously said? When are people going to listen to parents and residents too? Teachers are important and so are we. What about all the people that don't come to this podium and look into why they don't come to this podium? Parents for years have been made to feel as a problem when they fight for their kids. They are our children, it is our job to fight for them. Do you know what it's like, any of you sitting up there, to have a child that you have to fight for every day in every capacity? Medical, school, their daily rights? Do any of you know what that's like? It's exhausting. And parents are always made to feel wrong, to be an annoyance and that they don't know what's best for their own child. The other people that know what's best for these children are support staff and these teachers. And many of us have been blatantly lied to and disrespected on multiple levels and apparently it's not just parents. Because now you're losing great staff too. What is going to happen in this, in the future of this district if this continues? What's going to happen when more people leave? Are you gonna push our kids out of district? Because I will tell you right now, today, it's not happening to my child. You will provide for her what she needs in this district. I respect all teachers and in all capacities and I was an educator myself for many years, but it's an important job to be a parent and fight for your child too. It's very hard in this day, in this district, to know what's truth, what's not truth, what's rumors, what's for your own agenda. All of you up here do it, teachers are split, you hear very strong opinions from teachers at this podium. There are strong opinions opposing that on the other side that don't speak here for a reason. How are we as parents supposed to know which side is right? They're both valid, but for different reasons. They're not invalidated, the other side that's not here is not invalidated. They both feel a certain way for, for a reason. But as a parent and residence, hearing both sides of it, who do we believe? For you guys fighting with each other, who do we believe? None of this, however, gives any of us any light at the end of the tunnel that any of this is gonna help our children.
Thank you. Heather Cueva?
I am a parent of two graduates in the district and I have one still in district in middle school. And I've, I've been watching the meetings and debating about whether or not to come up here and speak and I feel that I, it was time. You were elected here to represent the district parents and act in their best interests. Several of you have shown that you can work for the betterment of the district, but I can't say that for all of you up there. People come up here to the podium and ask questions that go unanswered, questions around the budget, you, why programs are being replaced. There are no answers. Right now, the district needs stability and several of you clearly have no interest in providing that for our children. As per your job, you're only responsible for the position of the superintendent and acting in the best interest of this district. To interfere in any other position is overstepping your duty as an elected official. We are bleeding valuable people from this district. The Special Education Department is losing one of its best employees with Melissa Chalmate leaving. She's not the only one. I certainly hope none of you would have to have a child that's in special ed or needs special ed services. Put yourself in our shoes and see what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. We're losing the Director of Special Ed who has been in her position less than nine months. Nine months. Before that, we were without a special, Director of Special Education and Ms. Miller was having to do both positions at one time. She is one person, she should not have to hold more than one position. And now you've added a third one with her stepping in as Superintendent of the District. She is one person, you cannot force her into three different positions without something getting lost along the way. She should not have to do that. It brings major red flags when you can't hold on to somebody who was brought in to serve the district for less than a year. So my questions are, how are we, the public, supposed to trust that you have our children's best interests in mind when you're up there making decisions? What is the plan to address the needs of our special education teachers and other teachers who are coming up here with complaints that there's discipline issues and other issues going on in the classroom? How quickly are you gonna be able to find replacements to replace some of these teachers and some of the upper level administration staff that are leaving? Because honestly, who would want to come and work for a district where the board can't work together? For those of you that are not here for the kids and for the betterment of our district, when will you step down and allow somebody else to take your place on the board to work for the betterment of our children?
James Masadi?
So before I kind of dive into some of my data here, I was definitely curious what our process is in the district for coming up with the budget. Like, when does that process start, that we start building it? So I'd love for some information about that because, again, I was involved with the Community Task Force. We started meeting and the, the call was put out in the summer. Janine shared with us in our first meeting that we had a projected $11 million shortfall and the fact that we're still here, I just don't know when, we actually were working on the budget process when I especially went here, Janine's been having to burn the midnight oil trying to get there. I'm gonna share some unpopular opinions perhaps as I also present some, some facts. I mentioned earlier, we're the 34th largest school district in the state of New Jersey. When it comes to our overall spending per pupil, we rank 398 out of 570 school districts in the state. Administrator costs, we rank 371 out of 570. Classroom salaries, 463. Support salaries, 307. Operational costs, 417. Extracurricular activities, 216. Equipment costs, 289. And legal costs, 285. We have the best ranking in our legal costs, not probably where we want to rank well. When it comes to our ratios, our teacher to student ratio is 11.92. That ranks right around the average for the state of New Jersey. Administrators, 297 students per administrator puts us well above the average of 200 students per administrator. And support staff of 72 students per support staff professional is higher than the state average of 67. When you compare us against the 14 other school districts that have between 7,000 and 8,000 students in their district, we have one of the, we are the ninth ranked in overall academic performance and we are among the lowest in faculty and administrator ratios across those 14 peer groups. One of the things I would like to also point out when we look at the revenue for those same 14 districts that are of similar size, is that they average tax levy across those 14 districts is 66% of their total budget. Washington Township only has 57% of its budget coming from the tax levy. So by comparison, many other districts, the largest of those would be, I believe, Wayne Township has 90% of its entire budget coming from their tax levy. So I understand that we have a budget shortfall, a significant one, and that we definitely need to look into it. And when you look at our spending across all of the criteria, I pulled the budget data, every single line item, again, not the detail, but the way it gets rolled up into the state. And when you look at where we spend our money on a percentage basis, we are on par with every one of those 14 districts as well as all of the districts in Gloucester County and in Southern New Jersey when you compare against Camden and Burlington Counties as well. The one exception is our benefits costs. We are about 4% higher than average on benefits. So I think there's an area to figure out why other districts of our size and in our region are able to keep their benefits costs lower than where we are. But there's been a lot of talk, obviously, of, of the impact to the faculty, to the administration, the conflicts that are there. And there's a lot of data publicly available from the state that says we need to invest more money into our staff. We need to invest more money into our administration. And that in general, we need to have more money to do that. We are in a position where we're forced to have to raise taxes, but there are other ways to raise revenue for the district that I think, as Mr. Baldassero alluded to, you know, where is the five-year plan? What are we looking at? Where does this budget process start and how do we try to get ahead of this? Not to benefit the taxpayers, I am one of those and certainly I would love to not have my taxes go up. That sounds fantastic. I don't think anybody voluntarily just wants to sign up for 10% tax increases. I do want to have a fantastic school district, you know, for, and, and I want teachers who feel supportive and have the resources they need in their classrooms. So there's a lot of opportunity to, you know, not only improve what I talked on, you know, when I first came up, but the, the financial, where we're putting our money, again, needs to be really looked at because it's not into our administration, it's not into our teachers. You know, it's, it's into legal costs, it's into equipment costs, it's into extracurricular costs and those are all very important things, but there's, you know, I think the $10 million is needed, but I think we can't neglect the fact that there is public sentiment that needs to be addressed, so.
Thank you. Teri Capio?
I have a whole speech prepared that I may deviate from. I heard a few members say that they were not okay with approving the budget or the, the tax levy because of what it could potentially mean in what is being cut. We don't know what's being cut. I'm here as a parent of a student in the emotional support program. If you're not aware of what this program is, it was the ombudsman program that was cut last year. I do not know if this program will be cut again this year. The program has done wonderful things for the students. It is teaching more than what any, more than what any standardized test can teach them. Mr. Distillio, we had a call on Friday. You're aware of my concerns. The support staff that were promised to this program are being moved out. There is no consistency. The counseling program that was supposed to be in school, the contract was discontinued in January. They had another counselor they can offer. The social worker that was part of the program has now been moved out of the school. Not, she has other job responsibilities in another school. They brought in another social worker to fulfill the job duties. Because consistency in the, I apologize, I forget what was said, but the consistency in the service versus consistency in the staff is more important to kids that are an emotionally support program. This is not to take away from the, the special education programs and the needs that they have. You need to be, have consistent staff for these kids in our special ed programs, in our emotional support programs and our behavior support programs. Does anybody in the board, I, I just, I'm going to leave with, has anybody in the board even been made aware of what this program looks like and what it's capable of? I ask you to please educate yourself in what these programs are doing for the kids that are enrolled.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.